I'd like to call our city council meeting to order for January 23, 2019. The first item of business is a workshop. And we're going to turn some time over to Corbin Lee.
I'm going to pass out a copy of the agenda for the strategic plan. And Councilman Anderson, if it's okay with you, Mayor, will walk us through that agenda. Just take question and answers.
Please do.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the first council meeting in December, the council asked the mayor pro tem to assemble kind of the strategic planning meeting for our, for the council. And so I worked with, I had sent an email out to each of the council members asking for some ideas and thoughts, and I received input on that. I also met with David and Corbin and Rob and others to kind of facilitate the agenda. So what we're going to do is start at 7:30 in the morning with breakfast at the Public Works Building there on 40th West. We'll have a welcome by Mayor writing, and we have a facilit-
Can you tell us where in the Public Works Building you want us to go to? Is this kind of big?
Yeah. We will be in a conference room inside the, the main doors.
What if, I don't know where the main doors are? Are they on the-
You'll see the main doors.
Are they on the north side of the building? You're all up there.
They're, they're on the east side of the building. As you drive in off of 40th, they're right there.
Right on the northeast corner. Northeast corner.
Thank you.
Yep. And we have Ted Knowlton from West Ashfront Regional Council that'll help facilitate us so we stay on time in the morning. And we'll have at that point just kind of the ground rules as we have the discussion. Kim Wells will take a few minutes to give a summary, kind of an executive summary of the recent survey results that we've taken. There's some straw polls and some, some surveys that have been conducted, like with parks and such. And then we're going to have, each council member's going to have time. We kind of just allocated 10 minutes, give or take, to just kind of have a discussion on Imagine West Jordan 2025. Where, where are we kind of headed and where do we want to go based on the, the resident input? And then after a short break, we'll have some council discussion regarding short-term goals. What do we need to achieve now to achieve our Imagine West Jordan 2025? So kind of a visioning. And then with the recent change the council made with the Chamber of Commerce, we, I believe that it's good to have them come and just kind of introduce their programs since we'll have all of our department heads there and just kind of have an understanding of what Chamber West can offer the business community in our city. And then we've had discussion up here on the dais over the course of a year on just maybe some of our surplus processes and where things are stored. And so we have a brief tour there since we're at the site to look at surplus equipment that we have in the city. And I believe it'd be beneficial for us as a council to just look at that process as those come up to us quarterly as we surplus city property. So I think that will be time well spent. We have lunch. And then right after lunch is served, so it's kind of a working lunch, we would have each department communicate short-term and long-term goals. Some of them do, and, and I have asked previously up here on the dais, you know, when, when are we building the next fire station? What's the pace that we need to hire police officers? You know, as we work towards where do we want to be in 2025? And so each department will have brief presentations during lunch. We'll continue that after a break. And then towards the afternoon, we've got all the input we need as a council, I believe, or a lot of the input from surveys, from the department heads on short and, short and long-term goals. And Corbin has been able to, we're going to do kind of a prioritization exercise where we'll have some clickers. And as this discussion and our ideas are brought forth, we can kind of get a feel of where the council would like to take the city. And so Corbin will help us with that, some straw poll votes on goals and objectives that have been brought to us.
Are those like the little things that, like when you watch the State of the Union address and you can say, we like this, we don't like this? Is that what that is?
No, it's, it's a clicker like-
Because that would be cool.
It would be, that would be cool for residents to have.
I mean, it'd be cool for us to like, you know, you could see like you're talking about whatever and you know, everybody's in favor, everybody's not in favor, and you just kind of see the lines go up and down.
Yeah, so we just, we just need 115,000 of those to, to give out to the residents to, to score us. The, the clickers would be for us to just individually pull kind of our feelings on different topics, you know, whether it be the number of police officers, snow removal, rec centers, pools, parks, streetlights, whatever that may be as we have this dialogue. So what I would ask of my colleagues is just be prepared in the, in the morning. We talk, be prepared for like a 30,000-foot view of where you would like to see West Jordan go in the future. We've, we've spent a lot of time over the two years I've been on the council, not a lot of time, but there's been some things where we've had to be reactive to, and I'd kind of like to see us look forward. That's kind of the idea with this. And then there's some short-term goals. So the first one, 8:30 is kind of a long-term vision, and then 9:50 is the short-term goals and objectives. What, what is it that we need to accomplish this year in order to get to our, our vision? So I, I don't know if there's any questions. I know Councilmember Burton had emailed me a question on a, on a couple of things.
Oh yeah, there's some, there's some that want to discuss some things, or ask some questions, I guess. And Councilmember Burton, Lamb, and McConaughey are all out to ask you some questions, I guess.
That's wonderful. And I would just ask that maybe Corbin can jump in since he helped assemble this with me, so.
Councilmember Burton, you're up first, so.
Well, actually Lamb, Councilmember Lamb is-
So I don't have a question per se, but my job threw a wrench into my Friday plans. I planned this a month ago to be here. I will be here, but between 9:30 and 10:30, I have to go to a mandatory meeting that I couldn't get out of. So one thing I would ask is in the 8:30 session, if I could go first in the council discussions for the 10 minutes, and then the next session for 9:50, I would go last with everybody, if that's okay with you guys. I apologize, I tried to get out of it. Basically, they said, you gotta be there, but it's for an hour, but it's the worst hour of the day. But I just want to give you guys a heads up that I'll have to leave for about an hour, and then I'll be right back. Thanks.
Did you tell them you are already at the mandatory meeting?
Yes.
Really noted though.
Thank you.
And I was just going to see if you wanted to respond to my emails. I'm glad that you received, I realized it wasn't much before this meeting.
Yeah, I, I received it and briefly gasped, glanced at it, but with work today, I was not able to respond to it. But I think your three questions, one was the Chamber West discussion, and the feeling was that we have everybody there. We have the department heads, we have public, we have us, and it would be beneficial, I think, for them to just talk about their programs, the staff that they have, some of the things that would benefit the city that our staff could be involved in. And then I think the other one, the, the tour of the, of the surplus locker, and I, I think, you know, we haven't done a surplus, we haven't had an item, a business item, or I'm sorry, consent item to surplus materials for some time.
I think we do today.
We do tonight. But in the past, there's been some questions about the, the process, and so while we're at the Public Works Building, I think it's beneficial for all of us as a council just to kind of see the process, see the items, the condition of the items. And I think it gives us a, a better handle on that versus just pictures in a packet. And it's just a short 30-minute tour, and we can abbreviate it if we need to.
I don't think it's intended to be a tour of the building, just go and look at that stuff in there.
It's just the locker, not the whole building. And then the-
All the surplus paper clips we have and everything.
And then the, the third one that you asked was just presentations from each department. That is more input-driven, so it's input for us before we get into the, the, the real hard stuff towards the end where we take all this information together and compile it into something that we can execute.
Okay, my, my comment is, and it's the same as last time when we talked about strategic planning, I would like to have us decide what we want first before we have, and then give that information to the department heads, and they can come back and say, this is how we can accomplish this with an option or two and a cost or two, instead of come and say, here's what we can accomplish before we decide what we want to have accomplished.
Yeah, and I, and I can see where you're coming from. A lot of the departments already have plans, like our capital projects already has a five-year plan that we're, that we're working with. So Rhodes have five-year plans that they're working with. So some of this is going to be, here's the short-term things that we're working on now, which I think would be valuable input in order to come up with a Imagine West Jordan 2025.
So are we going to meet again after we get all the input from them and let them know what we want to have done and which priorities?
I guess the, the potential is that at the end of the day, from, the end of the day, is the 2:55 after we talk about committee assignments, the council presentate, or council discussion and prioritizing, prioritization exercise, that's where we're taking the input from the polls of the residents, that's where we're taking the input of the department heads of things that are already in process and formulating the plan. The agenda is open-ended. Previously, we've had strategic plans that have gone more than one day. This, I don't think, at the end of the day, if we say, you know what, we're really close to coming and, and formulating a plan, I, I could see us saying, let's continue this at a, at a work meeting like this or, or a separate meeting. I don't, we'll just have to kind of see how it, how it flows. But, but it's, it's, from my standpoint, it's input-driven, so we have input from the department heads, input from the residents via surveys, and then we can kind of formulate with these clickers a plan.
So then, after we formulated the plan, then will the departments come back and tell us how they, maybe we do need to schedule a work session or just use this work time for that to occur? Does that work for you, Councilmember?
It works, yes. I just want to make sure we have some follow-up afterwards and we execute what we plan.
I, I would, I would sense that we would have a one-sheet paper, you know, something that we can look at that's not a big binder of everything that was discussed, a one-sheet that says, this is what we're doing for five years at Rhodes, this is what our plans are for fire, this is what our plans are for parks, that summarizes all of this that everybody has a copy of so that we know what the plan is, and then build on that as we go with via additional work sessions, future strategic plans.
So my, my, back to my very first or last part on there, if I might, having Ted as the negotiator or facilitator, can you explain to me how that's going to work?
Yeah, facilitator, when we, when we did that in a, in a previous employment, the thing about having a facilitator is you have someone who's not a stakeholder. So we are all up here stakeholders, our department heads would be stakeholders in being able to provide information to us. So a facilitator helps us stay on task, helps us from deviating off-topic, and keeps us to our time. So it, it's, it's good to have a facilitator perform those duties as we're all having this discussion, just an outside person that can keep us on task.
I'm just curious to see how that's going to work. I mean, it might be fantastic, maybe it won't, I don't know, but we haven't done it before, so I-
The, the council has. Dan Griffith did it once at Mountain America Credit Union as a, as a facilitator, just an outside person who just keeps us on task, on our time constraints, so that we can accomplish the goals.
And thank you for doing the work and putting this agenda together, and I know that takes some time and some work, so I thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And Chad and I have talked because he's up for next year.
Councilmember McConaughey, you're up.
Thank you. Couple, couple requests, questions, thoughts. First of all, this'll seem petty, but I think we should rename the meeting because we're not actually planning the strategy for the city for the year, it's more of a goal-setting session and trying to figure out, more of a visioning session, trying to figure out where do we want to go, not necessarily putting together a strategy of how to get there.
And you know, in our council real estate policy procedure, they call it just a council retreat.
Yeah, that'd be fine, too.
So they don't call it a strategic planning, it's just a council retreat. In fact, I was going to read that Friday morning and-
Yeah, I, I know it sounds petty, but every, every year I hear from one particular resident saying, so what exactly is strategic about this? What is the strategy? Well, you really want to get down to definitions, that's not what we're doing, it's a visioning session. I would like to, I'd propose a couple changes on here. I think we should do the committee assignments earlier in the day so that as we're going throughout everything, we can kind of be thinking about that in terms of, okay, what am I going to be assigned to throughout the course of the year? Especially if we're going to be hearing from the different departments, if somebody is on, somebody's going to be working with events, it, it might change their interaction during that part of the presentation if they already know upfront that that's going to be their assignment. So I would put that probably even-
Like working lunch?
No, I would do even, even sooner than that.
Working breakfast?
Yeah. Move, move it up there because as we're sharing our, our short-term goals, maybe, maybe right after that, after the council has their chance for 10 minutes each, right after that, make the assignments. The other thing I would do is the Public Works tour, I would move that to the end of the day, looking at the items that are out there. It's not, not necessarily essential if something does go over and something does have to get bumped. Right now, the last thing on the, on the agenda is our conversation and our decisions, and I would hate to see that get cut short because we spent 30 minutes, and the 30 minutes went too long, so we could take a tour and look at some outdated equipment that's rusting and falling apart. I, so I, I would rather switch that one to the end. And other, other than that, the only other question would be if we really feel it's imperative to hear 10 minutes from all of the different departments in there, that's, that's, that's a lot of time that's almost on par. If this is a, a council visioning section, I would anticipate the council would have definitely the majority of time for, for the meeting, but it's, it's pretty even with, with all that. So if, if we don't need to hear from some of them, if there's nothing significant or substantial that needs to be brought up, some departments we've worked with quite a bit, especially during our planning sessions, so I, I, I don't know that we need to hear from all of them, so I would consider shortening that list if at all possible.
Maybe, so maybe if, if I'm understanding what you're saying is we basically take the 2:55 city council discussion regarding committee assignments and do that at the very beginning and slide everything down because we'd now have a half hour that we can kind of play with if we move the Public Works warehouse tour to later in the day. And that gives us a little bit more time for the council discussion and prioritization exercise. And then at 4:30, when we adjourn, maybe council members that are interested in going to tour could do that beginning at 4:30.
Yeah, or if we were to switch it straight across, I mean, that 11:30 Public Works tour would go over to four, now it'd be from four to 4:30. And then that city council discussion regarding committee assignment, that would be-
Correctly, 8:02.
Yeah.
Let me just interject-
Or right after the 10-minute.
Corbin, what time does Mr. Knowlton need to leave?
Mr. Knowlton's with us until 11:00 AM. If you want to do committee assignments from 11:00 to 11:30 in lieu of the surplus tour, that may work. But I would hate, having Mr. Knowlton with us for specifically from 8:00 to 11:00 was, was very intentional. So I'd hate to do committee assignments during that time when he, we have him there to be our facilitator.
So I think we should just do those during breakfast, like I think Councilmember Burton said. It, we've got 7:30 to 8:00, it's not, I would prefer we just do the committee assignments then, then they're done and we have that half hour.
We just do them right now. Anybody want to change committees? No? Good, okay. Can we do it in a half an hour? Done.
I think, I think we can.
It didn't take us that long.
Because I-
It didn't take us that, that long last year.
Okay.
I've seen some sessions where that's, where it's taken substantial amount of time. I've seen other sessions where we've just flown right on through.
I don't think this council, it'll take long, do you? I don't, I think it'll be fine.
Well, let's hold it to seven to 7:30 then, and, or excuse me, 7:30, 8:00.
Can I, can I mention something that might help there? Is if we all go through our list of current council assignments, we got an email just the other day about what assignments there are, and some of them are filled in as far as who's in what spot now. Look through them, if there's something that you think somebody shouldn't be doing it because they haven't been or couldn't do it, or somebody should, or if there's something you'd rather do that you're not doing currently, look it over and come prepared. And I think if we come prepared, we can, that'll be fast.
All right, if you'll change that then, and we'll have committee assignments from 7:30 to 8:00 with breakfast.
Okay.
Talk with your mouth full.
I would like to be on the muffins committee. Oh, wait. You're on the scrambled eggs committee.
So Corbin, do you need, did you get all that, or do you need to update it?
We'll do the committee assignments from 7:30 to 8:00. In order to make that work, please plan on arriving at 7:15, so you, we're ready to go right at 7:30 then. And we'll take the committee assignments off that last agenda item. Or, excuse me, do you want to adjust the surplus tour to the end of the day and move the lunch up earlier by a half an hour?
No, I think the Public Works tour was going to be at 4:00 to 4:30, and so we could probably move lunch to 11:30, and that gives us more time in the afternoon for some of these reports, and I can work with you on the, I, I get what Councilmember McConaughey is saying, and I, I can agree with a lot of what he said, and it might be beneficial on some of these committees or some of these department heads, instead of maybe giving a presentation that they have a, an executive summary that they can present.
So, so some of these, I know we're going to have questions. I mean, we've previously discussed parks and the, the replacement playground at the Betts Memorial Park, and they're going to have some very directed questions for the council as to what direction should, should we go. So there'll be a little bit more interaction with that. But some of these, such as finance, I'm not so sure how, how much they'll be. Not to say we don't need to hear from finance, but to have 10 minutes across the board, knowing that there's conversation that we have to have with some of these, if, if there's some that are not necessary, I would suggest that at the direction of the city manager, anything non-essential or anything that could be postponed, be removed, and then we also, as lunch has shifted up half hour, shift those presentations up a half hour as well, too.
I'd like to suggest something different. If they're each having 10 minutes, instead of shifting lunch up, why don't you leave lunch where it is because it's probably already been ordered for it to be at that time? But I'll bet some of our staff could present their things from 11:30 to 12:00 for their 10 minutes. And for me, I'm comfortable having the staff each have an allotted 10 minutes and them saying, I don't have anything because, as you pointed out, someone else probably will take more than their 10 minutes, such as parks. So I hate to tell anyone, hmm, you know, we don't really need to hear from all of you. I think each department head deserves to be, they've, they've already been told this. I'm pretty sure their bosses already told them to prepare 10 minutes or that they would have 10 minutes. So I hate to now say, yeah, we don't, we don't want to hear from you. And maybe it'll be of value and maybe it won't, but for me, I'd feel more comfortable leaving them.
And that, and that kind of goes back to my first comment about the name of the meeting. I mean, if this is the city council's opportunity to decide what we as a council want to do, then, then, then it should be our meeting. If it's a meeting for the staff to tell us the needs and wants and share with us the wish list items, then, well, that, that's typically what we've done in past strategic planning meetings, and that's why the question always comes up from, from residents, well, is that really strategic planning? Or is it like a, a state of the city is seen from the eyes of the department heads? It's what is the real purpose of the meeting? I, I have no objection to hearing from the department heads and hearing what they like and what they, what deficiencies there may be and what they like from us, but is it their meeting to talk to us or our meeting to figure out what we want to do as a council over the next year?
Yeah, the, the, to answer your question, the strategic plannings that I've attended, strategic plannings, quote unquote, that I've attended prior to being on the council was exactly as you described, where the department heads gave information on wants and needs. You know, here's, here's a picture of a truck that we need to replace, here's a picture of this, here's a picture of that. In talking with the mayor and David Bricky and Corbin, I've made, I don't want that. What I want is, who's got the five-year plan? I know capital part, capital improvements do, and there are others. For example, and I've used this analogy before, when, when are we building, when do we have to build another fire station? And if that's in 2020 or 2021, what are we doing right now in 2019 to prepare for that? So I believe that what's been given to the department heads is not so much, here's what we need, rather, here's where, here's what's in process of where we're going. This is our five-year plan. I know Chief Maxfield, we've talked about the timelines for the next fire station, so I would expect his presentation to say, based on our growth, these are areas that we're looking at, we probably need a fire station and firefighters in, in 20-whatever. So I'm not, I've not asked that we have what we've done before, which is, here's where we need help. I see this as Imagine West Jordan 2025. How fast are we hiring police officers? How fast do we need to handle the growth that we're experiencing? How, what is, how do we help economic development move forward?
Let me ask, let me ask Corbin, what direction were the department heads given regarding their, their presentations?
A little over four months ago, we actually asked the department heads to put together a very similar presentation because I wanted to see the same kind of five-year planning that each of the departments had for their respective assignments. In sitting down and putting this together, we spent almost three hours over at the Veridian, I found out from Mr. Zobel, for example, that that had never happened. They had never brought all of the department heads together in one place and talked about a goal that each department had and how it might relate to other departments. What was clear after that three hours, and we raced through. I mean, I, we kept on time, and the presentations were about 15 minutes per department. What became very clear was that where certain departments had major roles in seeing the implementation of procedures in other departments. And for the first time, you had department heads looking at one another and saying, I need your help, I need your buy-in. The same concept was shared with them on this occasion, shorten it to about eight minutes, two minutes of what you've accomplished, but eight minutes about what the goal is that this city needs to accomplish by 2025. It wasn't as interactive as maybe some of you had hoped for. I wanted them to tell you, this is how we're going to get to providing public safety in this instance by 2025. This is what we need to do as far as water rates and continuing growth if we're going to maintain it as we want. So it was going to be very directed towards you folks, understanding what we believe as a city is our responsibility for the citizens to see the continued success going forward into 2025. Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of, but, and I'm looking at, like HR and risk, I guess they've got a five-year plan, too. Keep hiring people, keep people out of trouble, I suppose. City clerk, you know, a five-year plan for the city clerk. I guess some of those, maybe from our standpoint, might be, we don't have enough information, I suppose, to make a decision, and maybe that's what this, this- And maybe that's what this, this determination would be when they gave a report of what their five-year plan would be. Because I look at some of these and going, some of them don't look like they could. What, what a five-year plan would look like? And maybe city clerk might be saying, okay, well, I've, I've done all this on ranked choice voting, and so we can have a, an update and give you an update on where that's going. Or I don't know. It's just, but so I personally, I think I would still like to hear from all those folks for what they have to say. Because and, and again, I think I'd like to hear from them before we make a decision about what we're doing. I think we would like to have that input and, and then take that input and, and make the best decision we can as council members. So I personally, I like to keep where it is, but.
So how about, I, I think Councilmember McConaughey is right, we should get rid of strategic planning. How about if it's just city council planning meeting? And for this time, we leave it because I feel like staff has already been prepared. But that before next year, Councilmember Lamb, before next year, we reevaluate. We take ten minutes to say, what do we want out of this session? And not just say, put the agenda together.
Well, it sounds like for us to make a decision, we need to hear from all these people anyway. So maybe next year, we make this meeting different, so we can go in the planning meeting and have the, have them speak just before this planning meeting so that we can make those decisions. Because I think it's important, it's like the mayor said, there's a lot of things that we see as council members up here, but we don't know what's going on in their departments because we're not in their departments. But if they tell us what they need, then we can go back and say, okay, here's how we can help, and here's what we can do to make sure that they're getting the help they need to make our city better.
And I hear that, but I also hear Councilmember Burton on your other side saying, I'd like to have us formulate an idea of what we'd like and then have them bring back what they're doing and what they can do to help us achieve those objectives. I don't know what the right one is, but before next year's, we need to figure it out.
I think it's hard. I mean, I don't run the Parks Department. I see what they do, and I see the great things they do, but I don't know exactly what they're missing. So how can I, as a council member, determine what he needs to help our city when I don't know what they're doing? So that, that's where my thought process comes in. I'd like to hear from them so that we can then make a decision on what we want to see as our city moving forward.
Because I think we're looking up here, so it's not really our job at that point. If, if what our, if our planning session is to look up here and, and look out far, then our job isn't to worry that Parks needs another truck this year and that Fire needs another one this year. Our job is to say, this is what, this is where we want our city to go. Now you help us figure out how we're getting there.
And I've always felt like we needed to have, I always felt like anyway, I needed to have as much information about a particular subject as I could get before I made a decision about that particular subject. So I would like to always get more information so I could make the best decision possible. And if I don't know, if I don't know much about ants and how do you kill ants or what, I, I'd like to know more about before I decide, yeah, you just pour water on them. Well, that's not going to really work. What's, what is the, what is it we're trying to accomplish? And how do we get there? And in order to do that, we need to have as much information, I think, as we can get. So.
And, and, and that's a very valid point. Although I don't think ten minutes per department, we're going to get enough information to really do that. I think this is my eighth year participating in this exact same conversation. So I'll just jump straight to the end where it usually ends up. I think it would be beneficial if we were to break this apart into two separate meetings. If we had one meeting in October, November, where the staff could present to us what's been done, what's been completed, what still needs to be completed. And really give a good, full ed-education to, to the folks on the council. And it also gives council a couple of months to do any additional follow-up they may need. Everybody on this council is on a little bit different position as far as knowledge of what's happening within the city. You have some on the council who are brand new and haven't had as much time to have exposure. You have others on the council who have worked as staff member for what, fifteen years? And have some pretty good insights as to what happens. So taking, when we take our meeting and try to cover all of these different things, like education, you're not quite getting enough education, but we're also not quite getting enough time to really have a good strategy planning session. I think it might be best in the future to break this apart into two separate meetings. One at the end of the year, give us, give that one over to staff a hundred percent, and we, we sit there as their audience. And then at the first of the year is when the council has the council meeting to set our, to set what our strategies are going to be or what our goals are going to be. Other municipalities will do that and they'll come away with a number of goals. Like you've seen Salt Lake City talk about addressing housing issues. You've seen Park City talk about things like carbon neutral footprints, things like that. And with Park City, what happens is there's a later subsequent follow-up during the budgeting process where the different departments will come and say, this is what we're proposing in our budget, and here's how it lends to the goals that the council has identified. The meeting that we've got right now, again, I don't believe we're strategic at this point. It's more of a all-in-one, try and, try and catch it all at once. But next year, that seems to be the ever, ever-present resolution of the same conversation. This is now my eighth time having this conversation, but.
I could jump in there, too. And I think what you just said is really good. Because if we were, if we were the audience, if we were just the audience in the meeting they had at the Veridian, where we were just listening, not jumping in to talk or comment, I think we would probably have gotten a, a, a great deal of education and information. And maybe, David, on your next one, which was about October, November, wasn't it, when you did that? We, you do it again and invite the council, but only as an educational seminar, if you will, for the council to listen to, but not to interject in. Because that's where we need to then come back and take that information and, and do our planning as a council.
Just to throw an option to all of you, we have all of the presentations in PDF format. We could forward them, forward those presentations to you tomorrow. So you'll have, see exactly what was discussed.
Yes, please.
Previously, and you'll have an idea of at least those, what those departments were considering then. Now, mind you, we have two new chiefs since those previous presentations. Those chiefs may have differing opinions as to how those presentations previously were given.
Mayor, can I, can I just interject one thing? Because I, I think you hit on a key thing. Like, as I look at some of these, you mentioned city clerk and HR risk. I won't know, I won't say that they don't have a five-year plan. However, it might be beneficial for a clerk to tell us what's occurring in document retrieval, document storage, those kind of things. New systems in place, just so we're aware. And I look at, at HR risk, and that touches every department. How we, how we, salaries are calculated, how we reduce the risk, things that we do in the city. And, and one thing that comes to mind of how all these departments are interrelated, and I'm going to use the police department as one. When an officer writes a ticket, that creates a chain of events that impacts the officer's time going, preparing for court. It impacts the justice court with prosecutors and the, the load of Judge Coons. So, so there's, there's impacts that cross different departments. Like Count, or David Bricky mentioned, just having this dialogue that, that our apartment shouldn't be in silos. The department should have this cross-talk dialogue. Because what happens in information technology has an impact to the clerk. What happens to HR risk has a impact to city clerk and economic development and police and fire. And I think we need to.
And, and Melanie's been really concerned about developing with each of the departments retention and recruitment. I know our chiefs recently were giving speeches and talks in which they say to the people they're presenting in front of, have you ever thought about being a firefighter or a police officer? So we're trying to unify that message of how to sell the city and then retain the people that we eventually do get a good chance to hire. There's one, just one last comment that I'd like to make. And that is, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of discussion, and it's more of a philosophical point that maybe is a little more strategic than it is, or it's more philosophical than it is strategic, probably. But we're hearing a lot of, well, we need to hear from the staff as far as what the parks need, or we need to hear from the staff as far as what, you know, what needs the city has going forward. And while we do need to hear from the staff, we also need to keep in mind that it is not the staff that decides things. It's, it's the residents who decide things. And they put the seven of us up here to decide things for them. They didn't hire any of you guys, as, as great as you are. That's, we hired one and he hired everybody else, and sometimes he came and asked our opinion first, but for the most part, that's how it works. They hired us. So again, I've talked about this org chart before. We always see this org chart that has the city council and the mayor at the top, and then the city manager, and then all the department heads. And what's always missing, always, is the people of the city. They're on the top. So if we think that there's Parks needs, this survey that, that Kim did, Kim Wells did, is probably number one that we ought to be looking at. That's, it, it's not the staff's job to come to us and tell us what the city needs. It's the city's job to come to us and tell us what the city needs. And for us to tell the staff, this is what the residents are telling us that the city needs. And we've done that in, in some ways, and I'm planning to bring this up again a little bit later in the meeting. But philosophically speaking, we just need to remember that the tail doesn't wag the dog here. It needs to be in the right order, and it needs to be the council setting policy based on what we're hearing from the people who hopefully we're talking to and listening to, and the staff carrying out that policy. It's not for the staff to set policy. It's for us to, it's for the council to set policy. So just, just a, a, a philosophical note there as far as, you know, we, the people and, and stuff like that.
So in, in response, Councilman Jacob, one thing you should get, if you haven't already got it from Kim Wells, is four survey results. These are the results of different efforts we've been doing to do just that, listen to the residents, listen to the citizens, see what it is they want. These survey results span different surveys we've done over the past year and cover a wide variety of topics. We want you to have those results to look through them, consider them. The time at the very start of the meeting is for Kim to just give you a very high-level summary of a couple of those results. But you should see, be seeing those from her to see what it is our residents are saying.
Okay, so kind of to recap everything, we're going to move the committee assignments to seven thirty to eight. And we're going to, and I agree with Councilmember Whitelock. I think if, if between eleven and eleven thirty, keep lunch at eleven thirty. If we could have the first three, maybe even four, prepared to come in there. And if, you know, at eleven thirty, we will stop for lunch. Or excuse me, at twelve, we will stop for lunch and, and then move on. And whenever we finish, and I know that we will try to hold to the timeframes as best we can. That's always going to be a challenge. I think that's one of the good things of having a facilitator for the morning session. He's going to try to keep us on task and, and remind folks, hey, you've got like, I think, two minutes left or something, so they can kind of finish up. But with each of us having ten minutes in that first two sessions in the morning, he's going to keep us on task, and I hope that's exactly the case. Any other comments about the agenda? Do we have, Corbin, are you okay with, you kind of know your direction?
We'll make that work.
And again, on the title of this, in our rules, policies, and procedures, it calls it a council retreat. We can change the name to a council planning meeting if we want and take the word strategic out. So when it's published, it's been published now, hasn't Melanie?
First, oh my goodness, first I'll apologize for my voice. Yes, to meet the twenty-four hour noticing requirement. It had to be posted today or by six o'clock in the morning. So it has been posted, but, and I could get some attorney comments. I don't think changing the scheduling is really considered amending the agenda. No.
I might need a translator.
You couldn't hear me?
It's semantics.
It's semantics.
He says we're good.
I think, Mayor, I think I know what she's talking about. This has been posted, hasn't it? Just like in a council meeting, you can alter the order of business. That is not a, that's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. In fact, the Open Meetings Act anticipates that that can happen, so that's not a problem.
Okay, yeah, because I'm, I agree, it's more of a planning meeting than it is a strategic meeting. So any other comments about the agenda in this work, work session? There was nothing else that was on my work session agenda. So with that, does anybody have anything else they want to bring up? If not, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and we've asked Rob Bennett if he would lead us in the pledge.
Would the audience please rise? Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you, Rob. We'll now move to communications and start with our city manager's staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, the only member of the staff that has a comment tonight is Brian Clegg from Public Works.
Thanks, Mayor. Council, I just want to give an update on the storm we received Monday morning. We got it cleared within twenty-four hours through the entire city. Had to do a little mop-up work on Tuesday morning and go through a handful of complaints. Just some fun facts I got from Michael on the snow removal assets that we, we utilized for the operation. We drove two thousand three hundred and nineteen miles with that one storm in the twenty-four hour period, all the assets, which equates to eight days, seven hours, and fifty-seven minutes and nineteen seconds of driving. So it was a, it was a good storm, but staff did a great job. I want to thank all the staff involved. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to city council comments. Start with Councilmember Anderson.
I don't really have any comments other than to thank Public Works for the great job and getting the updates from Mr. Bricky throughout the day on the, on the snow removal, so I do, do appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
What he said, pretty much. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I want to thank Roxanne Sigurd, and I believe Heather forwarded the email to us regarding the school district honoring and recognizing West Jordan High School last night. So I took the opportunity to go and, and watch their girls, what are they, drill team? The drill team present the colors and then the madrilles sing. So it was nice to see their school recognized and hear some of the great things that are going on at West Jordan High School and some of the advancements that they've made. Their, their student body president, they, I, I believe it was seventy-nine thousand dollars that they raised for their charity this year. So they, they were very happy with that. And they also have increased their math scores tremendously, so shout out to West Jordan High School.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb.
Let's enjoy it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Let's enjoy it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one item that I have, but I'll save it to remarks, seeing as we've already spent forty-five minutes talking about when we get together to talk, so.
Thank you. We'll now move to citizen comments. There will be three opportunities to speak tonight, two in the public hearing and, and one now. So with that, I will open up citizen comments. I have none that have signed up to speak, so if there's anyone that would like to address city council at this time, please come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Rob Bennett. I've been a resident of West Jordan City for about twenty-five years now. And I wanted to take an opportunity to stand before the city council, the staff, and the residents who are here tonight to express some gratitude. You are doing a wonderful job of managing our city. We as citizens owe you a great debt of gratitude for all of the time and effort that you put into making our lives better. I wanted to thank you, each and every one of you personally. Unfortunately, I only have three minutes. Unfortunately, I only have three minutes, but I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you do. Um, in my time that I've spent living in West Jordan, I have been able to see many, many things happen. A lot of times, we've been sort of made fun of in the newspapers for some difficulties that we've had interacting with each other. We don't see that anymore. We see the newspapers, the news services, a lot of the residents getting together and together talking about the great things that are being done in West Jordan. And it is a privilege and an honor to live in this city now. We have a lot of staff members who have taken it upon themselves to make this a wonderful place for us to live, and I wanted to say thank you for all of you department heads and all the people who serve in your departments. You have so many people who work under you that have dedicated their lives to making our lives better. Please thank them on behalf of our residents. And for the city council members who will be deciding what form the government is going to be taking in the next year, whether or not you're going to be running for office, whether you have friends or family or others who are interested in seeing what they can do to make West Jordan a better place. To all of you, I just wanted to end and say thank you so much for your service. There is nothing like a true public servant. And a public servant is someone who is giving of them, their own time and giving of their life so that somebody else can have a better opportunity to live. Each of you are doing that and we want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward.
My name's John Buxton. I've been here a while too. I've been here since I could hunt pheasants on Bill Shore's farm, so that was kind of cool out there. Hey, one thing I've noticed, we just got a increase on our garbage and water bill, and that's good. I mean, I understand we got to handle our storms, uh, sewage, wastewater and whatnot. I was curious if some of that money, I ride bikes, I love, in fact, I've, I've seen just a huge increase in the time I've been here of the number of cyclists that are on the road now. And it's, it's really a remarkable thing. You, you're giving us some nice wide shoulders, people are becoming more aware. Um, my buddy was out riding, he rides through the winter, I don't, but he was out riding the other day and somebody in a diesel came by and black smoked him, you know, cold rolled him. One of the officers of West Jordan pulled him over, so thank you for that. Um, nothing worse than pulling a bunch of diesel fumes when you're riding a bike, but I'm just curious if, if some of that money could be used to maybe sweep the streets, sweep those, uh, bike waste a little bit. I don't know how that'll work, I don't know what it costs, but it seems to be you'd be doing yourselves two favors. You keep the bicyclists a little safer, but also not letting as much junk get into those storm systems in the first place. So just a thought, um, if you guys could put that somewhere in your agenda, use some of that money. I, again, I have no idea what that would cost. You're doing a great job with snow, um, maybe a little bit something in the summer for some of those folks that love to ride in this part of the country, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, just real quick, I know typically we don't respond to comments that are out there, but could we direct Public Works to find out exactly which streets were noticing the issues?
Sure. Brian, if you could visit with him?
Brian, I could help you with that. I can let you know which streets need that. As a bicyclist, I know where that needs to be done.
Me too, what he said. I'm a cyclist too, so.
We'll move to the consent items, and I've been asked to pull consent item C, consent item D, and consent item F, so Charlie Delta Foxtrot. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve all consent items with exception of C, D, and F.
Councilmember Burton? Second the motion. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote. Loudly as you can.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
So we'll now turn some time to Councilmember Burton, who has asked to have these three items pulled.
Thank you, Mayor. These are just some small things that I've talked to with, uh, Mr. Duncan about, and he's ready to answer those and I can, I'm happy with his answer, I just thought the rest of the council may want to hear it as well, so if he can take a couple of minutes and then I, we'll make a motion to approve after we listen to Duncan, unless there's some other questions.
Members of the council, the, there were just three small sets of changes that Councilmember Burton had. The first change, uh, identified, potential change identified by him was in the definition section, one dash three dash two, uh, in particular, the definition for council chair. His, uh, concern was that, uh, he wanted to make sure that the council chair, it was clear that was selected for a period of time and not on a meeting by meeting basis. Uh, what I had noticed in researching other cities' codes, Salt Lake, Sandy, and some other cities, is that most of them don't put the term or the length of time that a council chair serves in the definition section, but rather they put it in a different, uh, chapter within the administrative title. In our instance, I think it probably belongs in chapter thirteen of Title One. Um, and that actually, uh, from the schedule that you've seen of titles as coming up next, there's one more group of titles five, ten, eleven, and then after that, you'll see the rest of Title One, other than this definition section. And in that section, you could, or in that chapter, you could identify, uh, you know, the length that you would like to see if you wanted to, on an annual basis or, or whatever it might be, that you want to, we can have that discussion at that time. There are some limitations under state statute, but, uh, but you can identify which one of those options you would like to choose when we get to that particular chapter. If there's some concern that this section is, or this definition is still a little vague, you could, instead of a period at the end of the definition, you could put a comma and then add the phrase "as set forth in Title One, Chapter Thirteen," and then that would be clear that whatever the length of the term described in that chapter would be the one that applies. That's what I'd recommend, either leave it the same or maybe add that clause. So maybe if we wanted to take these one at a time, Councilmember Burton?
Yeah, I, and, and on that one there, I think adding the clause would be good, because the way it's written, it makes it sound like each time you have a meeting, you need to vote for a new council chair.
Okay, so you feel like that would alleviate any ambiguity that might otherwise be there?
Right, that way it'll know that there, we know where to go look to know that there is a timeframe established with it.
Okay. And then on the, the second change, it's in Title Six, it's section six dash one B dash four, uh, under the emergency program manager duties. Uh, there's three different instances in that same section where it says chief executive officer or his or her designee. Uh, and I think the, your concern, Councilmember Burton, was with maybe the his slash her. Uh, I mean, it could also say chief executive officer or the chief executive officer's designee. The only concern I would have is that without something identifying who's doing the designating, we don't know who designates the designee, so to speak, so, uh, the his or her helps describe that it's either the chief, that either the CEO or whoever the CEO picks. Um, but there's any number of ways you could describe that. I just didn't want there to be an unintentional ambiguity as to, I mean, it's inferred otherwise that the CEO picks his own, his or her own designee. Uh, but I'm open and amenable to however you want to word that.
Okay, so, so what, my question for Duncan was, do we need the his or her on there? So if it says chief administrative officer and/or designee is what I was saying, but I thought there's no need to say his or her designee, we can just say or designee. But he makes a valid point that we want to make sure that it's the chief executive officer's designee, not just an open designee designated by somebody else. So I didn't think it was necessary, but he makes a good point. I don't think it's a big deal, so I don't mind leaving that in there.
So maybe just leave that one the same, is what you're indicating? Okay. Then the, the last one was, was similar. It's in Title Nine, it's section nine dash eight dash nine, it's risk manager approval. You have similar two instances in that section where Councilmember Burton is proposing changing from his slash her to the. Uh, that one, I agree, probably is a really good change because it's not really the risk manager's authorized dollar limit or settlement authority, it's the authorized dollar limit or in the other instance, the general liability settlement authority, so, uh, it probably is, uh, more accurate to make that change to, from his, her to the in those two instances.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, the only, the only comment I had on, on Title One with the council chair is, in, in my frame of reference, this is just a, a definition. And if we want to have a council chair elected by year or every two years or four years or thirty days or every council meeting, I don't know that this is where I would put it. I would put it, you said, in Title, Chapter Thirteen or?
Yeah, Title Thir-, yeah, Chapter Thirteen of Title One, yeah.
Chap-, that would be, because this to me is just a definition. It's like in, in legal writings, you have these definitions up front that describe what they are, and then later in the document, it defines the rules pertaining to that seat. So for me, I'm fine with, um, one dash three dash two for council chair, just like it is, because it's just defining the council chair position, and then the, the rules that pertain to that would be in, in, uh, Title or Chapter Thirteen of Title One. That's how I, that's how I would think.
So let's take these one at a time and let's start with a motion on C.
I'll move to appro-, adopt ordinance nineteen dash zero two, amending the two thousand nine City of West Jordan Municipal Code, Title One, Chapter Three, as presented.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to that motion.
So you don't want to have a reference to where the timeline will be and somewhere else, you just want to leave it just the way it is?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Never mind.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
I'm sorry, could you say that a little louder?
Councilmember McConaughey. Vote passes seven in favor.
Okay, let's take, uh, consent item D. Councilmember Burton?
So on D, I think he made a good explanation why we should keep the his, her there, so I move that we accept it as written.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent item D. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Consent item F. Somebody like to make a motion on consent item F? Councilmember Burton?
So I move that we approve ca-, item F with replacing the word the or the his slash her. Did I say that right?
In two places where it is, right?
That's right, in two different locations. Do we need to be more specific on those locations?
No, where there's only those two instances in that section, I think that's sufficient.
Okay, so moved.
Second. We have a second, uh, a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion, Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting in favor of the motion, um, though I would point out that, uh, when we last spoke, there was consensus of the council to add a, a little extra clause in there. I spoke with Mr. Murray and he was not able to get it in at this point, um, although my understanding is there's going to be a subsequent cleanup that comes in short order to help fix a, a few minor issues and, and this minor modification will be included in that. This is when, uh, in conversations with some of the folks in the water department, they had requested that a minor modification be made so that when the backflow prevention devices are, um, when they submit proof of having passed, um, they would also like to know the total number of devices at the location or at the, at the, at the address and the location, specific location of those devices. So it was just a minor modification to add those two additional requirements to it, but it's not in what we have today, but I'm supportive on the understanding that that will come shortly, so, thank you, Mayor.
That's my understanding as well, uh, and that's in section nine dash five dash four, uh, the subsection where we had added one short little clause and just inadvertently did not give that additional clause in, so we'll, we'll make sure in a subsequent cleanup ordinance that gets included.
Do we have a timeframe for that?
Yeah, we'll have it on next meeting as a general.
Thank you. Seeing normal discussion, let's vote.
Yeah, I'm going to let you.
Okay, and I'm reading these in order, not favoring myself, um.
Okay, I'll work with you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Thanks.
It's probably important to let the record reflect that Chris is not calling the vote, he is only calling the vote, not calling for the vote.
Thank you. Now, we'll now move to our public hearing section of the agenda. This was continued, the first one, seven A, continued from January ninth, twenty nineteen. Received public comment and considered for approval, Resolution nineteen dash nineteen regarding a lease agreement between the City of West Jordan and South Valley Sanctuary, Inc., for office space in the West Jordan City Hall as a non-monetary contribution of four hundred and twenty-five dollars per month to the South Valley Sanctuary, Inc., Jared Tingey.
Mayor, if you would indulge me, I'll take that item.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, council, you've seen this before. Um, we've now concluded the lease negotiations with the South Valley Sanctuary. You have a copy of that lease in your agenda packet. Um, I'll just give you a few highlights. If you have any questions, we can talk about those. It's a one-year lease, it's for the property that's on the first floor in the northeast corner of the building. Uh, as you know, we've talked before where the needs of South Valley Sanctuary are for their intake office, which is downstairs, and then also for areas, uh, in the, for counseling sessions. Um, this lease will provide them ninety days from the time it's signed to find alternative space for their counseling, which heretofore they've been doing in the Shore Gallery and the community center, the community room, which hasn't been working because those rooms were and are built for large crowds and there's been a fair amount of conflict between having two people in a counseling session versus using those rooms for what they were intended for. Um, uh, we've been working with South Valley Sanctuary on ideas as to where they could move. Um, uh, just as a reminder to you and then anyone listening, uh, the city is actually giving them this space, uh, and they service the entire south end of the valley. We're the only city that provides them space for anything. Most of their counseling outside South Jo-, or West Jordan, in, in, it, uh, occurs in the libraries in South Jordan, Riverton, Harriman, uh, wherever they can find space that's available, and we've encouraged them to talk to the county about space over here in the Veridian for their counseling sessions. It's a one-year lease, it's renewable for four times after that one-year increment, so potentially five years. And, um, uh, the reason the hearing is before you again is that under, uh, state law, since you're going to be allowing them to have the space without payment, you have to hold a public hearing, uh, because the amount of the contribution, if you will, in the value of the space falls within the one percent of the city budget limit. You don't have to make specific findings, uh, in your decision that this is for the benefit of the community, but you do have to have a public hearing and then vote on the resolution which would approve the lease, if that's what you're inclined to do tonight.
Thank you. And Wes? And we'll ask some questions from, uh, council members for staff. Sure. I'll start with Councilmember Jacob.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, excuse me. Do we know, what is the square footage of that office that they'll be leasing?
Three hundred square feet approximately.
Okay. It's much smaller than I thought. And the one percent, um, limit on charitable contributions is one percent of the city's budget for the fiscal year?
Yes.
That's total charitable contributions that the city makes, right? Not just per charity?
Yes.
So it's total for the city?
Thank you, councilman. And if I could, let me expand on it a little bit. That's a very good question. What the law allows is that you can, uh, grant city resources for nonprofit and charitable uses as long as you, uh, don't grant more than one percent of the general fund budget. If you want to give more than that, you can, but there's a separate public hearing process of fourteen-day notice requirement and an analysis that has to be presented that shows what the consideration of the quid pro quo is, the public benefit in exchange for what you're giving up as a city. Thanks for the question.
Sure. So we are, uh, looking at four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. I should have done this math before I brought this up, times twelve. Oh, three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. One percent of the general fund would be, uh, what, six hundred thousand and change, um, a little more. So we're well under that with this particular request I get. Um, I'm just wondering why we valued it at four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for three hundred square feet. It seems actually a little low. We could value that higher, but is there a reason why it's valued at that particular number?
I can't answer that. We asked Dave Clements to give us the number according to our city manager.
Okay.
He's our real property specialist. For those listening who may not know that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question is to Rob. Is there any liability the city could hold if something were to happen in these counseling sessions? I, I don't have any problem with the rent or the space you're giving to them, but there are domestic issues. If an issue were to come to the city that we, not even they would know about, would happen, is there any liabilities that the city would fall under if that issue happened here in our city hall?
It, it possibly could. If the, if the, if the exposure is somebody slipping and falling or somebody having a computer fall on them or something like that, then there is a policy here that they will, they will provide to us. Requires three million dollars, uh, aggregate coverage with the city named as an additional insured. In terms of the counseling itself, it's no different than, uh, your liability or lack thereof of having the Chamber of Commerce in here. We're not responsible for their counseling. There's nothing that could be tied to us there because they're not sponsored by the city. This is simply the donation of the space to meet in.
Okay. So my only worry was if something were to happen, some domestic issue that happened during a counseling session, that they would then come and say, well, the city's liable for this too for letting that be on their, on, on their property?
They, they could allege that, but we would prevail.
So we're, you, you feel recovered if something like that were to happen?
I do. I think, I think both under the lease agreement as well as the Governmental Immunity Act and case law that would support that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to have South Valley Sanctuary in our building. I think it's good for us and I hope it's good for them. So on that note, I move to approve Resolution.
Well, we're in a public hearing, sorry.
Oh, we're having a public hearing. Okay.
And, and could I add one more thing before? Sorry. Jen Campbell is here, uh, who is the representative of South Valley Sanctuary and so, uh, I don't want to put her on the spot, but if you have any questions, I'm sure she'd be able to answer those too. But yes, we need to have a public hearing.
And with that public hearing, uh, if Jen wanted to take a few minutes and even use that time, I would appreciate it. So I see no more questions by council for staff, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please come to the microphone.
I'm Jennifer Campbell. I'm the Executive Director of South Valley Services, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the services we're doing. We've been here at West Jordan and feel grateful to be here. Last fiscal year, we served two hundred and twenty-seven residents from West Jordan here in your city hall. It's an amazing message that you are sharing with your community, that you recognize that domestic violence will impact one in three women in our state and one in four men, and you're helping us provide an opportunity for those services here. We're grateful for that. We appreciate that opportunity and we see the difference that this makes in your communities and in the lives of those that we serve. We appreciate this opportunity to renew our lease with you and continue in our services here. As was mentioned, we offer, um, case management services here where we're helping individuals find housing. We have housing funds. We help them retain housing if they have them and help them find new housing if they need it. We also provide help as they're navigating the many systems, going through their legal systems and working, um, in those different systems. We have a great partnership with your law enforcement here. We appreciate and respect all of what they are trying to do here and have found, often had officers walk individuals over to our agency, especially since we're right here in the city. We appreciate, again, that opportunity. We've been offering clinical services here. We recognize that the spacing and the changes here in the city are causing for change and we appreciate the opportunity that you've had for us to provide those services here. What that has done is allowed us to show what would happen when you offered free, uh, mental health services to victims of domestic violence. We've leveraged those opportunities in ours to be able to, hopefully in the next month, open a free Victims Crime Clinic of Therapy Services here on the border of West Jordan and Taylorsville. And so we really appreciate that you have given us that opportunity to pilot that, uh, service here and now hopefully we can continue offering that to more people in our community. I thank you for your efforts and your commitments to stopping violence. And if you have any questions, I don't know if you can do that during public hearing, but you're welcome to talk to me after as well if you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address city council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn to staff for a motion. And then we'll have a discussion, or turn to, excuse me, council, and we'll have a discussion following the motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we taking action on this item today?
We are because we, we have suspended as of the end of the year, the public hearing movements for two weeks until we get down to item business I B.
In that case, I will hold off on my comment and let Councilmember Burton make the motion he was so anxious to make earlier.
Councilmember Burton?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman McConaughey. Now that the public hearing has completed, I move to approve Resolution nineteen dash nineteen authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between the City of West Jordan and South Valley Sanctuary.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Second with comment.
And we have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. While he may have been a little bit quick on the button, I wholeheartedly share the excitement that, uh, Councilmember Burton has for, uh, for this lease agreement. It's kind of funny to get excited about a lease agreement, but South Valley Sanctuary has provided some, some very necessary and beneficial services. And as a city, we are in a very unique position to be able to complement those who are in the unfortunate position of needing those services. Having the proximity to, uh, public transit right across the street, the police station next door, we have, um, the County Health Department and we have the courts all right here in this very, in this very small, very tight campus. This is one of the few, um, one, one, one of the few symbiotic relationships that I think would be appropriate to host within city hall. Again, as we heard Ms. Campbell talk about, um, the ability for our officers to walk over with a, with, with somebody who needs the help and introduce them directly to somebody who can help them out right here. It, it, it's a very special, um, situation that we have where we're able to help out. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to South Valley Sanctuary, especially to Jen for, um, the, the years and time that she's put in there to help take care of the folks who, who are so desperately needing those services. And I'm happy to be in a position where we can, um, al, albeit it's a diminished use of, uh, the city facilities here, it's, I, I'm happy to be in a position where we can still help out for the time being. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock?
While most fee waivers I vote no on because I don't feel like, um, I feel like we, we are waiving too many fees, but this one I will be voting yes. Domestic violence is a, is a big issue and, um, I believe that we have space in our city hall and that it's not displacing anyone from having a room. And I appreciate the work that they do in our community and am happy to have them here.
Seeing no more discussion, let's vote.
Okay, I took a cough drop. I can do it. Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
You guys are going to pay for this. The vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing, Item seven B. Receive public comment and consider for approval Resolution nineteen dash twenty regarding a waiver of fees for the Jordan Education Foundation regarding use of Veterans Memorial Park and the West Jordan Arena in an amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Date nayler.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Simply just trying to present the application to council for consideration of the Jordan Education Foundation. They operate their, um, the, uh, obstacle run over in our Veterans Memorial Park and throughout the rodeo arenas, and they've been doing this since about two thousand and fifteen. And, uh, they're requesting a waiver fee for the amount of five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And then also just to touch on a, a little bit of what Mr. Wall was talking about in your packet, you'll notice we did include, uh, the code that discusses waiver fees. So some of those questions were discussed as in the text in this packet, so you'd be able to, um, look over that information too. We also have Jason Casto here tonight that in the public hearing, uh, comment, um, will be, uh, talking about his organization and what good they do for our communities. So that's what I have for you tonight.
So questions from the council for staff? Councilmember Whitelock?
I, I just, it would be very helpful for me, and I don't, I don't even know how we would do this, but, but maybe you do. I would like to see a cost analysis when we waive these fees, i- if anything really does come to the city in any form, um, because we're constantly waiving fees and it seems to be the same players that come year after year. And I think the reason for that is because the other cities don't waive the fees. And so they come here because we do. And it's not my money that I'm waiving, it's the citizens' money. And so it troubles me. So for me to feel comfortable saying yes to these things, I really need to know what the return on investment is. And in my little mind, I don't really see it because when I go to another city, um, and unless there's already an establishment there that I want to visit, I don't eat there. I go back home or I go to the city that has the establishment that I'm already comfortable with. So I just don't feel like these events pull people in to shop lo, at our locations. So if I could, you know, if anyone can show me how that it benefits the citizens of my city directly and not just an expense for them, that would really be helpful.
Um, just to address that, I, we don't have any cost analysis as far as, uh, economic return, but as staff, when, uh, we run our waiver fees, we do track, uh, every waiver fee that is passed through council to meet that one percent, uh, to make sure that we don't violate that portion of the code. And so I have every fee waiver for the last year that has passed through council and the totals that pass through on the parks and the things. Obviously, there's other fee waivers that come to you though, so we do track that portion of it.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you. Uh, David, my only question is, do they clean up after they're done or do this, does the city clean it up?
Uh, we're working with, uh, Jason Casto to, um, ensure that things get cleaned up. And so, uh, we've had that conversation with Jason.
That's great.
And, uh, with his foundation and we've been trying to address some issues and concerns that staff has and he's, has ensured us that, uh, he's going to be a, a great steward this year.
That would be my only concern. I, I don't look at this as an ROI or as what's it bringing to our community. They look at it as it's a donation to this foundation, uh, even though we do monetary donation, we're doing, you know, we're giving them the opportunity to come to our city. But, you know, if, if there are issues with cleanup afterwards that we're not seeing from them, that would be my only concern. So, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, I will open up the public hearing on this issue. Anyone wishing to speak to council regarding this, please come to the microphone.
My name is Jason Casto. I'm a, uh, volunteer board member on the, uh, Jordan Education Foundation and, uh, am responsible for this event for the Jordan Education Foundation. I can address, exactly address some of the concerns that were brought up before that, but maybe before that, it's been several years since I've been before this council to talk about this event. Did that each year in the first year of the races, but it might be good for just a little bit of an update on this event. So when we started this event, um, five years ago, we were looking at different venues and at that time Julie Brown and Mayor Rolfe, uh, had promoted having it come here and that's how we came here for the first time. And quite frankly, we didn't really know what we were doing in that regard, but because of their help and a lot of the help from the district and the foundation, we were able to grow that event. So this will be the fifth year. We've got it four years and it's grown from seventy-five participants to seven hundred and fifty plus last year. It'll be over a thousand this year. We now have a hundred percent of every one of the schools in the Jordan School District participate in this event. And it's kind of become a must thing for the, for the foundation. And maybe just a little review, I don't know how familiar, some of you are certainly more familiar than, than others, but just a little bit about the foundations. So the Jordan Education Foundation is the nonprofit entity that represents specifically and only the Jordan School District. We, uh, do things to try to engage, the simplest way to say is engage the community and bridge the gap for the things that we can do for the students that aren't able to be done by normal funding. And so it'd be way too much to talk about too many things, but maybe just two things that the foundation does, um, and that this race very much contributes to. One is a program called the Principal's Pantry Program. Most people don't know this, but in the Jordan School District, there are approximately three thousand students that are designated as homeless. We have a hard time putting our mind around that. And while there are some that technically really are homeless and live out of a car or a sh, or, you know, a shelter, those are mostly determined as people who are couch hopping, maybe don't have a place to go and sleep here one time and here another, but there's about three thousand of those in the district. And because of this race and other events, we now have what's called a principal's pantry in a hundred percent of every school, which means a principal has the resources to give food and hygiene products to these children over the weekend so that they're able to have some, you know, food and some help while they're away. And because of donations, mostly by the, the, uh, high schools, you did mention that the West Jordan raised like seventy-nine thousand. Every one of the high schools contributes some of their money to the Principal's Pantry Pro, Pantry Program. And now we will be able to have a washer and dryer in all the schools that request one so that those kids can also do laundry. So that's a very big one that this event, that this event helps. The other one would be the, uh, Cash for Classrooms. It's a program where s, any teacher in the district can put a, uh, request in for a grant for their classroom and get money that will go to do things like buy an iPad or buy supplies. And, um, this year, approximately three hundred grants were per, were presented by the foundation, um, for approximately three hundred thousand dollars. And from the race alone, there was set forty-seven teachers that received grants because of the, because of the foundation. And if you would like some information, I have that information, uh, district wide. If you would like some of that broken down, I can very specifically get how much comes back to West Jordan specifically. I can get the number of grants that went to West Jordan schools. And I could also get the number, the amount of dollars that were contributed to principal's pantries for schools within the West Jordan. That one particularly would be very strongly benefited to this city based on the demographics of some of the elementary schools, the Title Nine designations. They get much more designation than, than some other schools. they get much more designation than, than some other schools.
Title IX, one, Title One.
Title One. Title IX is the, uh, women's sport, sorry, yeah. Thank you. So that I could, I could, if you would like that information, that could very much be, be provided. And maybe just to, to address one thing, I think one of the reasons also that we wanted to come this year and give a chance to interact, to have questions answered, because when we started, there was clearly a sense from the council that, hey, we would like this to be, we would like you to have your home here. And there has been some, with there's been so much change, there has been some that have expressed concern, well, maybe this isn't the permanent home for this race. And we, me, as the one who implements it, would love that. It's too hard to try to bounce somewhere else. But in terms of that, we have had three of the cities ask us to come and they, they will waive the fees to bring us. So, we would love to keep it here. If you feel like as a council you don't want it, then you don't need to stop.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move to council for a motion. Councilmember Burton?
Is now appropriate time to make a motion on a public hearing?
It is?
I thought so. I would be thrilled to have this be your permanent home if we can, but we'll just do this one year at this time. So I move to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty, waiving the fees associated with the use of Veterans Memorial Park for the Jordan Foundation, Jordan Education Foundation.
Councilmember Lamb?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, discussion to the motion. Councilmember Whitelock?
First, I want to thank you for coming because I and Mike had quite the conversation at Home Depot about why the heck was no one from the foundation here last year for this fee waiver. So thank you for coming. I appreciate all that the foundation does and, and for your board. And, and, and some of you are my friends, actually.
Well, just, you have a lot of love on the foundation, by the way. I know that you had a lot of interaction with the foundation in your past. So there was many on the board that have, um, you would drop work you did years ago or something.
Thank you. So I very much support the foundation. I very much appreciate all their work they do. And I do know that West Jordan is a city as a recipient because we have most, oh, well, we don't have most, we have all of the Title I schools, um, in the district. And we have the most socioeconomic-challenged students in the district. And while I really like you and I'm happy to have the, the event in our city, I have to be true to my, to my values and what I have done. And for the most part, I vote no, but I can assure you, you'll still be welcome in our city and you'll get all the votes you need. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize there's a motion on the table. I, I, I would have preferred to have a conversation before the motion. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor writing?
Yes.
Vote passes five to two.
Move to business item eight A. Discussion of possible action regarding ordinance nineteen dash zero six regarding a rezone of one point six four one acres located at approximately fifty-seven oh one west, seventy-eight hundred south, from SC dash two, Community Shopping Center Zone to M one, Light Manufacturing Zone. Think Storage LLC, Warren Kirk, applicant Larry Gardner.
Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember McConaughey's got a question.
No, well, um, I just wanted to know if you'd be okay if I explained my no vote now or if it's something that I should hold until remarks?
On this item?
The one that we just voted on.
Oh, say that again, you wanna just?
I, I tried to hit my button earlier, right after, so I could explain my no vote while there was still a representative here. If you're okay, I'd like to explain. If you prefer to move on, then I'll hold till remarks.
Go ahead and explain your no vote.
Thank you. My no vote's not because of any opposition to Jordan Education Foundation, rather out of frustration. Last year was the third year requesting, um, that we waive fever, waive the fees. And my recommend, it, it was difficult because there was nobody here. I had two requests. Request number one was, um, to apply for a, apply for service in lieu of fees rather than directly requesting that we push all the fees out. It would be nice with so many people there to get a commitment for a certain number of hours of service to be performed in the park rather than just asking the citizens to, to take care of covering the, the bill in full. So that's something that I had requested last year. The other recommendation that I had made was perhaps working through one of our committees, uh, specifically the Healthy West Jordan Committee, because they do have a budget specifically for these types of items and they do look for organizations to partner with. They've done, uh, fund runs and things like that. And an obstacle course would be something that's right up their alley. Nothing was, not, i- it was frustration that, um, af- after three years not having anybody here and those concerns not being heard. I, I do share the same, or the same feelings as Councilmember Whitelock, which I'm, I'm glad there are enough votes for it to carry. But I really would prefer to see a request in the future for a service in lieu of fees rather than just the straight waiver. And make sure there's a commitment to help out with the activity rather than putting it all back on the citizens here. I'm excited to wel- excited and happy to welcome it, but that's why I voted no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Is it, do you want any feedback on that or is that not appropriate?
It's not appropriate, right? Thank you, though. And, and, and maybe I'm wrong, we could have discussed, you could have had that in the, in the motion portion, I guess, you could have made that.
Procedurally, once there's a motion on the table, the conversation should be directed to that motion. I wasn't opposed to the motion, but because of my comment, it, procedurally, it wasn't appropriate for me to say, ma- make my remarks at that point because of, it, it just didn't, it just didn't work out.
Okay, well, thank you. So now we'll go to that business item eight A. Larry Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The public hearing for this item was held on January ninth. And I'm here to answer any questions, uh, that you may have on this item. And Paul Stringham, one of the applicants, is also here if you have any questions of him.
Okay, we'll do that. Councilmember Whitelock?
So my question is, um, last time we met, um, the applicant said that, that they weren't allowed to have a ride-in, ride-out that originally they thought they were going to be able to have. And I wasn't clear if that was city staff or if that portion of the road is UDOT and UDOT said no. So I just wanted to know who said no to that.
It's a little bit of both. There is a distance, uh, UDOT distance requirement from, from the interchange. And also our traffic engineer did not feel it was in best interest of the city to put a ride-in, ride-out when, in what essentially will be a very busy intersection at one time in the city.
That's interesting. So, so could it be allowed if it, would it be legal to have it there with UDOT? I mean, you're still giving me both of them, so I don't really have someone to pin it on. And I'd like to know.
Paul, Paul Stringham?
If, if UDOT said no, then we can't do it. But if it's our city that's saying no, then we could look at that. And so there's a difference there. So I kind of need to know which it is.
Okay, so Paul Stringham could answer that better than me.
Mayor, City Council, nice to be with you this evening. Uh, it was represented initially that we could get the ride-in, ride-out from the city. And then it came back after a period of time and, and staffer was, those recommended that, that could, that we could have that, uh, pulled that back and said, as Larry said, that they, the concern is just that it's too busy there at that intersection, uh, with projections of growth and traffic counts. And so it was pulled back. So as a result of that, it was a decision that we made as a business decision that we just really cannot go with a commercial building right there. We have so much commercial.
But you could if there, if you were allowed the ride-in, ride-out.
That's correct. We, we would feel better about that decision and do it with the ride-in, ride-out. Correct. So based upon that, that decision, we then went to this.
Right, then you asked for the more storage unit.
Yes, asked for, for the storage.
Let me jump in there, too, because I think Scott Langford has some information, too, he'd like to add.
So to, to clarify what Larry has stated, which is accurate, um, if I can point on the map, the typical, uh, distance that, uh, UDOT restricts, restricts access is three hundred feet from an intersection, which basically puts you, let's see, about here. So from approximately this point, uh, on to the east would be under the city's jurisdiction. Playing in with all of the, the safety considerations, uh, as you well know, just to the north is a very large two-hundred acre master plan. And you can see already that, that, the, the road alignment is set, comes down here. And so you've got a lot going on, a lot of access points, um, in a very short span. And so technically, could there, could the city allow a, a potential ride-in, ride-out? Yes. But as, uh, staff has listened to the city council about safety and traffic efficiency moving east-west, uh, Mr. Baronowski felt it was not in the city's best interest to allow that for, for safety and efficiency reasons.
So at some point, probably way before any of us, someone on the city also felt we didn't need frontage roads. This is our freeway. That can be a true freeway, that can have commercial along it. And I'm very frustrated at this point because we're blowing that again. So we're gonna have all residents living against a freeway and that's not stellar. And I don't think that's what the body has asked for either. So I, I really am struggling with this one because I don't want to say no to the applicant because that's not fair to him. But I don't want to say yes to the city either because a good commercial building there would benefit our city. So I hope my fellow council members can help me one way or the other.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. And again, it's, I, I echo a little bit of Councilmember Whitelock, and it's not the developer. If we take a step back, I believe this was up at our last meeting earlier this month. And I believe it was, um, said that, you know, we, we rezoned at M one because we had power lines and some things there, but we had this great parcel next to Mountain View that could be some kind of a, a retail thing. And I think it was mentioned in the comments that we could do an ingress, um, so many feet, but then it was deemed later that it had to be further. And I, I understand we've got the master development across the street. I understand all of this, but I, I probably would have voted differently on the, on the M one rezone, um, had all that information been, been given. So my, my frustration was, is with our processes at the city, not the applicant, not, not what he's trying to put in. I'm, I'm just bothered that we, we, we rezoned something for something like this M one. We have a parcel that's reserved that's on the corner of a future freeway. And because of a change in the city, we're now gonna put storage units. So as people come to West Jordan, um, and they come off of Seventy-Eighth, which has no frontage roads, um, they, that's what they, they come to. For, for decades, this is what we will have. And I don't want to, um, I don't want to penalize and not permit the developer to do what he's asking to do because we have basically said, we can't support commercial in that spot, so let's do the next best thing, which is storage units. So that's, that's where my frustration comes in. This is why, you know, if we had a vision, we had a plan, we would have something set up differently than houses along a frontage and storage units along a corridor of West Jordan. So it's more a comment than, it's, it's just a lot of frustration because I probably would have done a different vote on the M one zone had all this information been available to me when I made that vote. Because now the decision we're gonna make is gonna impact, like I said, for decades. And so it's more of a, a comment on a, on a frustration. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just kind of investigate this decision by the, um, traffic engineer just a little bit more. And that is, when this interchange is developed as a freeway interchange, there will probably be a little bit of realignment done because most of the freeway interchanges here are single-point interchanges or spooies, as, as they're known as, right? That single-point urban interchange where the off-ramps will come down and come toward each other under the freeway, you know what I mean? Uh, so the, there's one interchange point instead of two that there, that is there now. That being said, as the, so as the bridges go in, the area under the bridges will be narrower than what is there now. I give the, you know, in all my Mountain View corridor, uh, meetings and things that I've attended and just paying attention to websites and, and their plan, is that they built the outside lanes of the freeway and the off-ramps for what is our part of the free, of Mountain View corridor, as opposed to the frontage roads, as we've heard, uh, which we have south of us. So my, my kind of question is, is will the right turn, when this is a freeway, let's say in, in five to seven, eight years, heaven willing, uh, or twenty? I have high hopes for UDOT, what can I say? That when this is a freeway, will the interchange, the light won't be where the light is, is what I'm saying. So the right turn coming off of the northbound lanes may or may not be exactly where it is now, is what I'm saying. And just looking at the freeway development that we've seen, as Bangater has turned into a freeway, as, uh, or is turning into a freeway, at, at other intersections that we have seen as, as cities and UDOT have rebuilt interchanges, uh, Hundred and Sixth South is a great one, Ninetieth South of the freeway is a, is a great one to look at. They've gone to this narrower interchange underneath the, the freeway as opposed to a wider interchange with two intersections. So I'm just wondering, I, I, I'm wondering if the decision, based on where that interchange is now, is appropriate for going forward based on where the interchange will be in the future? In other words, I think the ride-in, ride-out is feasible, um, for a couple of reasons, but that's one. And just.
From what I know, for UDOT, there is, um, that is all the right-of-way they're planning on using for Mountain View freeway. Bangater, um, that was never.
Bangeter's different.
Fully intended to be a freeway, it has turned into a freeway. It was supposed to be an upgrade Seventh East type road. And so that's the reason there's been millions and millions of dollars in property takings to make that work. And while I'm not the expert on this, it would, it would either be Dave Murphy or someone from Public Works or Bill Baronowski or Nate Nelson. What I have been told is that was all the right-of-way that they wished to purchase in phase one. I don't believe that they want to go any wider.
I agree. I don't think that they'll go wider.
Because they've sold, uh, as you remember, on the west side where Gladstone.
Yep.
Apartments is, they sold that back to the developer.
Yep.
And then they're also actively, uh, pushing many pieces that are left over to the people who previously owned it.
Right, right. That's what I understand as well.
And if the light, um, the light location probably will change, but that doesn't change the distance from the, from the interchange. And that's, that's solely what he based his decision upon.
Right. No, I, I agree with that. And, uh, so Paul, a question for you then, as the, as the applicant. If the ride-in and ride-out were still permissible and were still feasible, would, would, do you think you'd have a easier time or, or at least a feasible time doing the commercial on that, on that chunk?
Yes, if the ride-in, ride-out was approved, it would be.
Okay.
My preference at this point, because it's taken so long.
Sure.
Is to move forward the way we have it.
Yeah.
That being said, I want to do what's right for the community, what's right for the city. I'm confident that what we are developing there as a storage facility will, and we recognize where it is located and the importance of making something attractive there, that we will do something attractive there other than unlike what you've seen in your city at this point. other than unlike what you've seen in your city at this point.
I I appreciate that, and I have driven, I drove past the Think Storage in South Jordan today.
It would be better than Think Storage in South Jordan.
Drove past that today, and I I don't have, I don't have an aversion to most storage facilities. Um, to me, they're, the the hype around them is a little bit overblown. But what I'm seeing here is, I think, a right in and right out, I would think, as long as it's MUTCD approvable, I would think that it would be okay. I get that the road coming in on the north side of the road is further west, and that kind of complicates it a little bit. But that's on the north side, that road's not going all the way through. It does create an intersection, but it doesn't create a road that goes all the way through. So you'll have a right turn coming out of this and another right turn going on to what would be that road if it extended further south into the substation there, which, oh, that's not the substation. But anyway, that road's not coming straight through. At least not on this, right? That's the substation over there. What's this, what's the little square in the middle here?
It's the gas pressure line.
Oh, okay. In any case, the road's not coming, it's not a four-way intersection, it's a three-way intersection. So I I think the right in, right out should probably still be feasible. Um, I'd like to appeal the decision of the engineer and and see if we can't have another look at that. I've done this before, uh, as the engineer has told us no, and I've said, wait a second, and we've had a different outcomes when we've had a second look at this. So I I would hate to delay the project on for the applicant. However, I do really want to get this right.
Good.
And I think it's very important. So, um, I'm not in favor of approving tonight the uh, the rezone until we nail down this right in, right out issue. I think that's uh, more important. That's just my two cents. I'm not making a motion yet because there's still people to comment, so.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will disagree that a right in, right out is good there. When I fifteen was built from Salt Lake City to Provo to Ogden, there was frontage roads all along I fifteen. Those frontage roads are all gone now. Some of them still exist, but they're hard to get to or they're blocked off. So I still, my opinion is, as I'm looking at this, even with a right in or right out there, it's still too close to that interchange right there, which will be a major interchange in a few years. I even feel like this other road that goes on to the north side, where you can see its lineup, where there's almost too close as well and will cause traffic issues, where a council will be sitting here in about ten years deciding whether or not to put in a roundabout or a light there. So that's going to be a traffic issue that we don't worry about hopefully in the next four years or so or however long that we're all on the council. The the feeling I get from the council is a storage unit shed is not pretty. We don't want people seeing that as they drive in. But you've got to think of this, think of in other cities, San Diego or in California or other cities that you've been driving around. When you get off a freeway exit, you're not worried about if it's a building or if it's a storage unit. And so as far as I'm concerned, I I wouldn't put a commercial building there because I think it'd be too hard to get people in and out and get people to put my tenants in there to keep it viable just because of the traffic that's going to be next to that freeway in a few years. So, um, it's it's hard for me, I I like what Alan said. We messed up by allowing this to be zoned this way. This little corner should have been part of this other M one corner here, and they should have been a whole section put together there rather than just a little corner left by itself. But now we're kind of stuck with that unless there's some way for us to include that little corner into this other section. So at this time, I and and putting, holding this off to get it right in and right out is not something that I would vote for. Thank you.
Homed discussion? Somebody want to make a motion then? Councilmember Anderson?
I'll have to use your paper. So I'm going to move to approve nineteen oh six regarding a rezone of one point six four one acres located approximately fifty-seven oh one west, seventy-eight hundred south from SC two zone to M one zone, Think Storage LLC. I'm doing it, I'm making the motion simply because the developer's done everything that they've asked to do. I agree with Councilmember Lamb that, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty. There's a gas regulating station, I I guess there, a pipeline, and and we've got a power utility and, um, hope hopefully we can do things with the other corners. But that's my motion, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember Lamb. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
If it passes six to one.
Business item eight B. Adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty-one, updating the council rules, policies and procedures to require, one, two council member sponsors to initiate placing an item on a council agenda, and two, a two-week, one-meeting waiting period to take action on an agenda item after a public hearing is held, both Mayor Riding and Councilmember Anderson. And I'll just explain too, the the kind of the reason behind this. If we have council members that want to place items on the agenda, it's would be good to know that we have somebody that will second it. Uh, I've watched, uh, things happen in the past where council members did try to put things on the agenda without a second, and, uh, it was kind of embarrassing for them in the city as well. And I think it's imperative that if a council member is going to put something on the agenda, that they do have support from at least one other person to do this, to put it on there. And the other item too is, I think that when we were, uh, doing the public hearings and then coming back two weeks later, at least with a business item, I think it gave us as council members an opportunity to really think through the comments that were made, uh, by the public during those public hearings and to to internalize those thoughts and try to make the best decision we could. I think it takes a lot of the emotion out of trying to make the decision that night. And I understand that Councilmember Burton has, uh, suggested that, well, maybe there's an opportunity when there's no public hearing, no discussion by council members to go ahead and approve it. That could be good, but I think the thing that we need to hold on to is consistency. We need to express to everyone out there that we are consistent. When there's something that's going to be on a public hearing, it will be on the next meeting's agenda or unless the applicant wants to move it off, which is in the in the, uh, part of the packet, then yes. But we need to be consistent. We don't want somebody coming along and saying, hey, you, uh, you approved so-and-so's last time. How come you can't approve mine this time? It there's, we just need to be consistent with it. And I think that it worked out, in my opinion, again, really well when we were doing this the last three months of the year. To where we took the emotion out, we gave us as council members time to listen to or internalize the things that were were said. Gives us gives us time also to investigate deeper if we needed to into a particular situation. So with that, let's go ahead with the discussion. Uh, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding number one, two council member sponsors to initiate placing an item on the council agenda. While I kind of agree with that, because I know that you mentioned that it's embarrassing if nobody seconds that thing, I would hope that as council members, that all of us would try and get a second before you put it on an agenda, before we did that. Because if not, then I don't know, the embarrassment isn't really the fault of the council members. It's the it's the embarrassment that would be for that certain council member. So I would not really favor putting that as a resolution because I think each one of us is an adult can choose whether or not we want to put something on the agenda. And if it doesn't get a second, then I think that's our fault as an individual. So, um, as far as the segment goes, I do agree with you. I I I like how we've taken some of the anger out of some of the public hearings. You know, it's it's difficult because tonight, the hearings we had for A and B are perfect examples of why are we waiting another week for those? It would be nice to just move move forward those because there's nobody fighting against us on those. But then we have the other ones with land or with rezoning that are always going to have somebody that's going to be against it, and that's where it helps to have that two two-meeting, um, thing to do. But I agree with you, we can't just pick and choose. Uh, there has to be some consistency there, or you will have somebody that will say, hey, well, why does mine take so long when these others don't? So, um, I agree with number two. Uh, I'm still not in huge favor of the number one, saying that we have to get that initial second in order for us to put something on the agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. This would be a kind of a good little workshop item, by the way. Because I've been sitting next to Kailene for a year now, and I'm finally comfortable saying that out loud. But only on some things. That said, um, I'll I'll go ahead and voice my thoughts on both of these issues as well at the same time. Uh, the first one getting a a first and a second, I kind of agree with what Councilmember Lamb said. I think though, the rare occasion, I would say, it was a frequent occasion for about three and a half years, but it's, uh, hasn't been a frequent occasion before after that where we've had the problem where somebody puts something on the agenda and then either pulls it or it's not seconded or it's discussed, and then it dies because only one person wanted to have a a hun- a platform from which to speak for a minute, is what it looked like back then. And I was fortunate to be present for about a year and a half of those three and a half years. That said, if we do go down that road, I would like to see it noted on the agenda that the who the first and the second is. So that way, when it comes down and it says, Councilmember Jacob, Councilmember Whitelock on it, we don't, you don't turn and say, okay, whose whose is this? You know, you don't turn around and say, okay, which one of you two? You know what I mean? You know whose item it is and you know who the second is. So if we're going to put it on there with both names, that's how I'd like to see it done if we do that. But I kind of agree, I don't think we really need it. On the second issue, the public hearing issue, I think it's, we've done this a lot where we continue an item for two more weeks, and we don't come to a decision, and we continue an item for two more weeks after that. See utility rates, see business license fees, see lots of things. We we do this all the time. This isn't a, um, an unusual occurrence. Some things are quick and easy, and they're, some things are on consent. We don't talk about them at all. We're just like, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. And those things don't require a public hearing, but maybe some merit a discussion. Maybe some of them would be put off for two weeks, and that has happened too, where we've had items on consent that have been pulled and discussed, and, oh, wow, we didn't think about that. Let's put that off for another meeting while we get more information. We do that all the time, whether it's on a public hearing or not a public hearing, on a business item. We do it all the time. All almost all of our agenda items say, consider for approval or, you know, receive public input and consider for approval, or discussion and possible action. Doesn't say discussion and yes, we will vote on any of them. So we can always put something off two weeks. It's not a matter of really consistency I see as much as it is a matter of just getting it right. Some things we can get right in five minutes, some things we need years. I'll just say, uh, several meetings. Some of them, we need a lot more time to to digest, to get more information to talk about. But by no means is it every public hearing or is it even most public hearings? So I think having the option to put it off for two weeks when there is a contentious, if it is because of a contentious public hearing that we've had, where, um, you know, we've had a lot of public come out and speak against something that we all thought we were in favor of, and so we want to consider it. I I'd say if if any council member is uncomfortable voting on it on it for a given week, he should get a second, and we can vote on whether or not we should put that off for two weeks. It's parliamentary procedure. I think it's already taken care of in the rules. I don't think we need to do that. And by the way, over the last three months, we've had several meetings go well past midnight, partially because of this, because we've discussed the same thing twice, and we often will say the same thing twice. We'll say it two weeks ago. It also gives every member of the public a second chance to come back and speak again and sit and comment on the same issue, whether they spoke on it during the first public hearing or not. So it it prolongs things that don't necessarily need to be prolonged. Not saying it never needs to happen, just saying that it doesn't need to be every public hearing.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So as for the having two names on there, as Councilman Jacob mentioned, we were here before that rule or suggestion or advice went into place. And even before that, when I would have something to put on there, I would get a second or talk to somebody ahead of time, just because I like to know a little bit of what's going to happen before I get to the meeting. So I don't think that's a necessary item, and I think if someone falls into that trap, they'll soon learn. So I would be opposed to that. And you already know my feelings on the second part, and I want to add a couple of comments onto that if I may. One is, it would be really nice if every public hearing was also consistent, so we knew what we're getting, why they got here, but they're not. And so since each one is unique, we should treat them unique and work on them uniquely. So I think making a decision according to the information we have is better than just making a blanket decision hoping that it'll cover them all. And I think today was a great example. There was no need to carry that public hearing on to another week for the approval of the of the using the, the, yeah. Well, not the park, that was the second, not the park, the sanctuary, thank you. And there are several of those. Last meeting, we had a couple of them that, if we look at it, we could have just handled those quickly and smoothly and just gone on. So if the council is persistent on wanting to do the the second part for the public hearings, I would recommend we do it only for land use and not other items. I might go for that, but if we just blanket the whole thing, I would have a difficult time with that.
Councilmember McConaughey.
I swear Councilmember Burton was looking over my shoulder at my notes. As far as the public hearings go, um, I was a little bit torn on this because I I don't like having everything doubled up because then it doubles up the amount of time that staff have to take away to spend here in council meeting. And I don't necessarily know that that's the best use of their time. However, I don't like the idea of playing each one completely individually and not really having a good game plan. That makes it really difficult for, uh, somebody who's coming in requesting one of these, well, somebody who's coming in with a request that triggers a public hearing. They really don't know what to expect. So I like the idea of making sure they have properly set expectations, especially with developers, there are timelines that they're trying to meet that are not just arbitrary, but sometimes funding decisions are tied up into those. And there's there's a lot that, uh, there's a significant chain of events that could happen. So, um, like Councilmember Burton, the little note that I wrote here is, I could be supportive of that for land use only. And then others kind of play it by ear because some of these, um, aren't aren't really necessary to to drag out. Where we do have a substantial turnout from the public with a lot of thoughts to be shared, I think it would absolutely be appropriate for us to continue to another week before we make a decision so that we can, uh, digest the thoughts that have been shared. But if nobody shows up for a public hearing, I wouldn't see a reason to delay it to the next week. So I would be, like Councilmember Burton said, supportive of, um, a modification that's only for land use. As far as, um, putting something on the agenda, um, requiring two council members, um, most of my thoughts have, uh, already been shared here. The prudent thing to do, if a council member is putting something on there, is not make sure you have a second, but make sure you've got at least four votes to make sure it passes. You're not looking just for a second, you're looking for passage when you put something out there. So be most prudent to speak with everybody on the council. That being said, if it doesn't happen, um, that that's a different story. And I think people have learned their lesson quickly. The other thought is, if there is something that somebody's passionate about, and I may not be in agreement, I'm still going to say yes. If somebody calls me and says, if Councilmember Burton says, hey, there's this particular item that I'd really like to put on the agenda, I really feel strongly about, I I'm not opposed to having the conversation, so I will happily put my name along with it and let it be out there to be heard. So I think if we put something on the agenda, I'm fine with just one. We have had conversations in the past about requiring two members of the council, a minimum, but we've talked about having four members of the council approve any direction given to staff that uses staff resources. I still think that would be appropriate. If there's something that comes to the council, we discuss it first before having any legal resources or planning resources or anybody else go and do any further footwork. We talked about it here. There's no real issue in my mind if we have one council member put something on, um, if it's for discussion. I don't want to see a lot of staff time being expended before it comes to the council. There was another thought along with that, and I forgot what it was. So I will relinquish the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, the reason I I put my name to this, um, is on item number one, there there's issues, not issues, there's concern about, um, the there, there's issues, not issues, there's concern about, um, the time that we spend, that we request our staff to spend to prepare something that, to get on the agenda. And there's been times since I've been on the council, um, where an individual, uh, a, another council member has asked staff to prepare resolutions, to prepare ordinance changes, um, and then it, it comes up and there's no support behind it. So I think the two, having two council member sponsors to initiate placing an item on the council agenda helps ensure that we have the staff doing, um, the things that are the most beneficial and most efficient use of time. And I, I don't know, I, I don't know, David, or maybe you've got a, there's some history behind that, more of, of the dynamics of that.
No, I think you adequately addressed the concern when I was hired as the city attorney. There were, you have city rules that allow council members, one at a time, to put something on the agenda. And we were, in one instance, I can think of one of our city attorneys who spent, in the forty hour work week, he spent thirty hours getting the necessary item prepared and ready for placement on the agenda. It was put there and no second followed. So it was a way of trying to reach a balance, sort of a check on that opportunity you have to put something on the agenda regardless of what it is. And it was sort of a, a request made to Mr. Pallish and the other council that you had a second. Um, my suggestion was, as we move forward into this new form of government, let's, let's codify what it is that's going to be expected of this new council and set some precedent. Um, with regard to the second step, I can tell you that it, there, there may be a way to bypass the requirement of always having a second meeting, and I'm just thinking out loud and sharing this idea. Judges, um, are required to make findings if they're going to deviate from the rules of, for example, on a sentencing. If someone is going to have to sit in jail pending an appeal, the judge has to make a finding that the person's dangerous. In this instance, if you made a finding as a council, that there are no objections, and a vote by two-thirds of the council to overrule your rule, you could accomplish the opportunity to vote that night. You'd be making a finding that there's no one present in the audience objecting, and you could vote, but you, that would require two votes that night, one to vote by a, not by just a majority, but a two-thirds majority to bypass the rule, and then put it on. But I, I throw that out because I want to provide options and opportunities and some oppor- uh, opportunity to perhaps clean up the language that I'm seeing. I'm frankly not thrilled with the language I see on page eight, where it says, the applicant may choose a different meeting from after the next regular council. The, the opportunity of the applicant shouldn't, shouldn't be to choose, it's to request. So I'm throwing out those oppor- those comments to maybe bring this back, if you'd like us to clean it up and come up with some language to fix that, and maybe address, um, that, that page eight item. And I'm sorry, Mayor, if that slows down the process, but I wanted to give opportunities and, uh, s- suggestions to the council to consider.
Okay. Thank you, David. And then as far as the, uh, item two, the two-week waiting period, I do, I do appreciate, um, Councilmember McConaughey's comment, but I wanted to see with Rob, are we, can we separate land use from all other uses, or are we creating some issues? I think it's important that we're equitable in not making those decisions live on the dais of whether to approve it or, or delay it for two weeks. I think we have to have a, a setting that this type is two weeks, and this one can be done the same meeting.
Um, in the, in the realm of land use, there's a broader principle that the state has required, and that is, uh, that you have to act on the application in a timely manner. They haven't defined what that is specifically, in every circumstance, there is a provision called the ripcord provision, that if the applicant is not satisfied that the council's moving along adequately, uh, he or she can demand a decision within forty-five days. But if you chose to have a process that said, a land use decision will be on the agenda in two weeks unless the applicant requests otherwise, you could do that. Uh, I, I'll throw my two cents in, as long as you've asked. If you're going to have a, um, a two-week rule, which I don't think is a bad rule personally, because I think it does give you time to think about the decision, I think the idea of having it out to where you could have a two-thirds majority of those present vote to hear, to vote on the matter that night is a good idea. And it's very common in other cities. It's also very common in other cities to require two council members to put an item on the agenda. I can tell you that just in the year I've been here, we have spent hundreds of attorney hours preparing any number of things for the council that end up going nowhere. And my observation in watching the meeting is that I probably could've predicted they were gonna go nowhere, just because of getting to know you the little I have so far. So it's a real cost issue for you who have stewardship over public funds to make sure you're not sending the staff off on wild goose chases. It's just my, my two cents worth. But on the land use issue, you'd be okay to separate the two if you'd like to.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Whitlock.
So I'm comfortable with having the two-person rule. For some reason, I already thought we had it, 'cause I was told that. So, um, a- and I think it makes sense, for me, it makes sense, and, and I don't feel like it's that, that I'm not an adult, it just says that I've, I've got another council member that says, yeah, let's talk about that, that's an okay idea. Um, on the other one, I would want it to be land use and rate increases, because both of those, I think are where, where I need more time, so that when people come and speak, I, I would want to be guaranteed more time to be able to process it and reach out and get additional information. So if I were going to to vote, I would want both of those, not just the one. So if, if, if we were comfortable with that, I could certainly support that.
We could change just rate to budget issues? Is that a better way to say that, or is it simply fees that you're talking about? Or is it the budget process in general?
I gave up my mind. Thank you. Well, to me, a fee is a rate increase, so I guess what, what I'm trying to convey is, anytime I'm asking the citizens to give me more of their money, then I would like to have an extra week in between to reach out to them.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, to, to expand a little bit on Councilmember Whitlock's comment, it sounds like you're saying, um, public hearing items that are requi- budget items that require a public hearing, in addition to land use items that require a public hearing?
Yes.
Is that helpful for legal? Okay. Um, we could write it that way, perfect. Going back to the, the two-person thing, um, I, I definitely heard the concern from, from, uh, our staff about city resources being used to put together items, uh, for agendas that are requested by council. I, I guess I would fall back on modification then, that, not even modification. Two people in the council shouldn't be able to dictate thirty hours of legal staff time being spent, or one person shouldn't be able to dictate hundreds of hours from our legal department being spent. Um, anything that requires more than an hour or two of staff time really should come back to the council, and it should be the body of the council, and at least four saying, yes, please go do that. So as I'm reading this, and it just, it, it doesn't, the, the language that's provided is very, very basic at this point. Um, it just says anything at all. And in my mind, the first step, if we want legal to do something, is come to the council, put it on an agenda, let's talk about it as a council. If four people agree that we should have a certain sort of resolution, at that point, once we have direction from the council as a whole, then legal or planning or parks or whoever would put in the time to make that adjustment. That's why I don't have an issue with having just one person put something on there, because I'm thinking of this, a conversation between us as a council, staff really shouldn't be involved at that point, other than just put the item on the agenda. If the council member wants something to go along with it, it should just be kind of a paragraph narrative of this is what we're looking for. I would never expect to see something coming to the council without prior discussion that already has a resolution or an ordinance associated with that. That, in my mind, that shouldn't happen. Um, the other thought that I had is, the way this is written right now, if you go to page four, uh, city council sponsors, many agenda items are initiated by individual council members. Okay, that's fair enough, I don't know that that sentence really has to be codified, but a minimum of two city, a min- minimum of two council members are required to place an item on the council agenda. So does that mean two people are gonna have to agree with IT about the items to surplus before that gets placed on the agenda? Um, the verbiage right now doesn't really leave leeway for staff to put things on there. Um, so that would need to be clarified. But the other thought is, again, if, um, a- again, if Mr., well, I won't, I won't pick anybody out of staff, but if staff wants to put an item on the agenda, they don't necessarily have to have a second voice. Why should the rules for putting something for discussion on the agenda be more stringent for city council, um, for our own body than it is for, for members of staff? That's kind of the predicament that I have. A- again, I'm sympathetic to the, the resource issue, um, and I think we can fix that by just making sure that, as a council, we take efforts ourselves to make sure that we're not asking things of staff we shouldn't, and the staff, um, if there's anything that's more than an hour to the direction given to the requesting council members, absolutely, I can do that, as soon as you get four members of the council to say yes. Would you like me to put that as a discussion item on the next agenda? So that's, uh, my thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't want to echo what others have said, because I, it wastes time, but the, exactly right, what, what Chris just said. Um, this, the, the other thing I want to mention is with what, uh, David said about bringing up, uh, a two-thirds vote to end debate and vote on, well, it's not really to end debate, but it's kind of like a culture motion in, in the, in the, um, Congress, where you have to, you have to have a, a vote to have a vote, right? And so we have the rule that we're going to have a vote in two weeks, okay? And then we have the possibility of overriding that rule if, under an event like tonight, you have no, uh, no opposition, or there's no reason, we don't see a reason to carry it forward for two weeks, we can override our rule. I really like that option, as opposed to separating out the issues, 'cause who's, who knows what other issue may come up where we do want the two weeks? And now if we tighten our hands and say, well, we can't do it because we have land use or budget only, or whatever it might be, having, having the option to override our own rule, I kind of like that idea. Um, Councilmember McConaughey also brought up a great point about, staff can put items on the agenda right now without any council support, um, which is an interesting point. This is a conversation I've actually had with a few of you, uh, separately. You don't see this in any other legislative body at any other level. At the state legislature, you don't get a state staffer putting items, putting bills forward on the, uh, on the, uh, you know, the legislature. You don't see, uh, Congress members, you don't see the, the chief of the IRS running bills in Congress, they have to go to a congressman. I, I don't think it's necessarily, oh, Mr. Bricky has, he's chomping at the bit.
It is, it is because of the form of government. I have the executive power, it's my agenda, and if I want the staff to put something on, but that's changing, so I was trying to set the precedent going forward, uh, that you, as you roll into twenty twenty, it's not gonna be my-
I was getting there, I was getting there, because even the President of the United States, in a similarly divided, two branches of government, three, but we'll leave the judge out of this for now, the President of the United States can't, he can propose legislation, but a congressman has to run it, right? A congressman has to be the sponsor to support it. So even an elected mayor, who's the chief executive who's sitting down there instead of up here, would need to go to a congressman or a councilman to get support for it, no?
Now, under, under state law, the new form of government you're going to, the mayor can put things on the agenda.
Right, right, no, I, I understand that, under state law, the mayor can, but we can set a rule to make it a little different for our city, right?
Not under the new form of government, it's in state code, the mayor can place things on the agenda. The other thing to remember is, there's a difference, not being quite so broad philosophically, anything that any of the people in this room that are staff on in the agenda, it goes through Mr. Bricky. There's seven of you, and that's why every city that I'm aware of has some sort of protocol where there is a certain way a council member puts things on the agenda, because there's seven bosses there, there's only one boss here. That's the philosophy behind it, irrespective of the form of government.
No, that's, that's good to know, I wasn't aware that the, the state law overrode that, that ability. It was an idea that I had, that to have a council member involved, every time staff or somebody wants to put an item on the agenda, grab a council member, explain it to them, and say, can you back this up? 'Cause that way you know, just like we would know with two, two people, that way you would know that you have support of at least one council member before you bring it up.
Well, and I, and that's, that's a good, that's a, that's a valid point, and I think if you were to talk to any of the mayors that are currently serving, or former mayors in the council-mayor form of government, most of the time, you will find that they do a lot of homework before they do propose something.
Oh, sure, and I'm sure staff does as well currently.
Before they put it on the agenda, because they don't want to be shot down by the council.
Right, right. And I'm sure staff does as well currently, but we have seen things come up that staff has worked hours on, and we voted down. And so maybe, but, uh, the point as far as directing staff or staff time is, is spot on. No council member under our current rules can direct staff to do anything individually. We can request information from staff, but we cannot direct staff, any of us, including the one in the middle seat, we can't tell staff to do anything. You have to have four council members to direct staff. The pet license issue that I brought up last year was a great example. I asked to have that on the agenda, I had support of, I think it was Councilmember Burton, to put that on the agenda. Oh, and, oh, and, thanks, I appreciate that. And we had a discussion, and the discussion was, my motion was to move to direct staff to prepare the resolution. We had a very robust debate, a lot of, uh, comments went back and forth, and it failed three to four. Staff never prepared a resolution, I don't think you guys did any work on it. I did some homework on it, the other council members did some homework on it, and we had a good discussion, and it died, without you guys having to do anything. That's how it should work. However, we should've voted for that, just saying.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, just, uh, really quick. Based on the conversation, I, I'm wondering if, uh, rather than a motion to approve, I don't necessarily want to make a motion to deny, um, but I, I think we might be at a point to move on. The only one comment I had left to make was, um, I like the idea of a rule or a, a mechanism to bypass the rule. The one thing I would suggest is, for years, we had, uh, our council rules, having our meetings end at nine PM. It got really irritating to pause the meeting every night, nine PM, to suspend the rule ending the meeting. I'm wondering how long a rule to allow the override would, would last before it becomes too much of an irritant, so just, just something to consider. I, ha- having said my piece, um, I, I could be amenable to the two council members to have an item for discussion, um, although I, I really don't see the need for it, um, but in transitioning to the new form of government, if this is helpful to get out there now, that's probably the best argument for it, um, at, at least in my mind. And, a- a- and then again, the, uh, the two-meeting thing, I, I'm not ready to support anything other than, uh, restricting it to land use and budget items, uh, requiring a public hearing, and anything like that would require additional work from legal to, to modify. So, um, seeing Councilmember Anderson's light disappear, um, this is not a motion, but I would just suggest direction to staff to come back with verbiage to, um, never mind, I'll turn it over to you Chair, to, uh, Mayor's Chair, to, uh, figure out what exactly that direction to staff should be.
Well, let me, let me just, let's run this by us, and, uh, let me make a motion then, uh, that we adopt Resolution nineteen twenty-one with the following changes. And that is to, uh, keep item one, the two council member sponsors in there, and then item two, we do the two-week waiting period with the option of doing an override vote, an override two-thirds vote in that. That motion did not get a second. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I didn't second that, because, um, I'd like to see the language. I, I didn't second that because I'd like to see the language behind what those changes would be, and I would be in favor of direction to staff to bring something back that had, that incorporates those changes, but I'm not ready to ratify in language with, or ratify an ordinance with language that has yet to be nitpicked by the seven of us.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Would it make sense to make these two separate resolutions? Because it seems like they are, or we're trying to combine two into one, just a thought out there. I don't know where the council wants to go, but it seems like both are different issues. We might make it tonight, Chris.
Councilmember Anderson.
Um, I, I, I had turned my light off because Councilmember McConaughey was kind of right on with what I was saying. So in light of the discussion that's been on the dais, I think we do separate them as two items, and the two council member sponsors, let me see if I get this right. So at least from what I'm gathering from the comments, is that the two council member sponsors to initiate placing an item on the council, maybe with a time limit to staff, so that we're, we're having a little bit of control, we're having a little bit of restraint on staff time, that we have more of the discussion up here on the dais, so that the, there's at least four that direct staff to maybe invest the thirty hours or hundreds of hours.
Let me, let me just make one comment about that, too, and that is, uh, as, as a former staff member, I would have council members call me and ask me to do things, and I'd simply say, would you call the city manager? I'd be happy to do it. Call the city manager and ask him to ask me. So we need to be careful about what we do as council members in, in trying to direct staff to do things. Even, even directing them to give us some information is, you know, asking questions is, is, you know, I, I want you to give me some information. So we need to be careful, that's the only thing I'm saying, but, uh, again, when we're asking staff to do something right now, it should, everything should funnel through the city manager.
Correct. And then the, the waiting period, I'm all on board for, uh, budget and land use and having the, the two-thirds override. I think that would be a good solution, based on what I'm hearing on the dais. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Like, like I said, although I, I don't really see the need for two, I, I'm okay with just having one council member put something on, on the agenda, it's not going to give me a huge amount of heartburn if we have something that says two, that requires two. However, I would suggest that as we do that, maybe we clarify the language a little bit to say, an item for discussion, and then elaborate a little bit further. Any item that would require, I don't want to say significant or substantial, but more than minimal or more than a couple hours of staff time requires consent from a majority of the city council before staff time can be expended. The thing is, I, I don't want to find us, ourselves in a position again where we've codified something saying two council members can put anything on the agenda, and a future council says, oh, that means I can propose a complete rewrite of one of our section, one of our titles of code. I'm allowed to do that, staff, you have to comply. So if we are going to do something that codifies that, yes, two individual council members can put something on there, I would like to see something in there that limits the amount of staff time or clarifies, can put something on there for discussion, items that require significant staff time has to be authorized by the majority of the council. I, I, I think that might help a little bit with some of the concerns that were being voiced earlier by our city manager and attorney.
And Mayor, if I could, Councilmember, I've actually seen a couple of policies that reflect what you just said, so I think that we can more artfully write this and include that in it.
So let me, let me, if everybody's okay, I would like to give some, uh, direction to staff, and that is to split this, uh, resolution into two parts for, uh, presentation at the next city council meeting with the, taking into consideration the discussion that has taken place tonight, uh, by council members, and the information you've just gleaned, um, from other sources. So, uh, how is everybody, just kind of take a little straw, will everybody okay with that?
Yes, I do have a question, if I can ask real quick.
Please, go ahead. Councilmember Jacob.
If we're going to leave in the part about requesting a different date, if a, an applicant can request a different date on land use issues, I would just like to have clarified who approves that request, or who denies that request, who they requested of. Just saying, uh, account, an applicant can request a different date, kind of leaves that, okay, so they request it, and who says yes or no? So if it's the zoning administrator who approves that, or if it's legal, or if it's the city manager, that just should be, if that's, language is going to stay, that should be specified.
I think in, in the case that we've had before us before, it, it came from the applicant to economic, or to development services, is that correct? And so.
And it, it, it kind of, Mr. Wall alluded to that fact, it was, it was pressed, a specific date was pressed because of that state statute, the forty-five day, uh, decision. You needed to make a decision within that, that timeframe, and that's why it was, was pushed. We don't see that very often. Normally, we can, we can work with developers, but we can work on that language.
Okay, that's, is that enough direction for staff to?
Could I ask, if I could, Mayor, one more question. Councilmember Jacob made me think of something. If we do come back with something where the council makes that decision, um, do you want the vote to be two-thirds of the total council or two-thirds of those present? Sometimes, you know, the law says for you to take an action, a final action, it's got to be two-thirds of the total council, irrespective of how many are here. But in a policy situation like that, you could choose to have it be two-thirds of those present. I just, what's your preference? There's really no magic answer, right?
Actually, with a seven-member council, it's going to be the same. It's going to need to be five vote, well, no, it can be four out of five, but it would also be four, you're right.
You could have three out of four.
Oh, if there's five members, that's the only time, or three out of four.
I just didn't know how restrictive you want to make this.
I would prefer, uh, two-thirds of the entire council.
We can write it that way, and then you can think about it if you want to.
I, I believe we, we have like votes to go to closed session, has to be a two-thirds vote, and that's two-thirds of the quorum that's present.
The quorum present.
So I would think to be consistent. I don't know if legally it has to be consistent.
Doesn't.
But, um, I would think to be consistent, it should be two-thirds of the quorum, but I, we can hash that out after it's written.
Okay. Oh, how about if I write it, well, I, I won't say, I want to write this the way you want it. You've got to feel comfortable with this.
Well, any other discussion about that then? Because we've got one that says two-thirds of the entire council, one, two-thirds of the quorum present.
Quorum present.
Okay. I'll write it, how about if I, I'll write two-thirds of the quorum present, and then if you think about it and you don't like that, we can change it two weeks.
You're going to wait two weeks to make a decision about something, then?
I'm so sorry to get into the weeds, but I'm just trying to think of every contingency you might want to have a decision on.
Okay, then, with that, we will move to item number nine, remarks. Councilmember Anderson.
I just, uh, just had a remark I wanted to, to bring up to the council. As you know, out in District Four, there are peculiar odors that happen from time to time. Um, I'm of the opinion, it's not sourced where many people think it's sourced from. I've, uh, when I've been notified of the odor, I have driven out, and I've gone through the industrial area, I'm looking at who's open. I've driven out to the, uh, the plants there west of Bengeter Highway, and I'm just wondering if council would support, I've talked with GIS, I've talked with David Bricky, about possibly putting together a, a, uh, a survey thing that people can use, residents can use on their phone, that they can, they can track where they are, where they're, where they're detecting that smell, and it's tied in with, um, it's tied in with wind direction and things like that, so we can try and pinpoint this. I don't think it would take a ton of staff time, but I would hope that the council would be supportive of trying to identify this, uh, this odor that permeates every now and then, uh, residents in District Four.
Something like that would be very handy with these little council yes and no clickers that, that we could.
Is there anybody that's concerned about that, or? Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, to Councilmember Anderson's thought about the sniffer app, or whatever we want to call it, um, boy, there's so many things going on. I'm not necessarily opposed, but I just want to make sure we prioritize appropriately. One of the things that's been driving me crazy, uh, when you, when you talk about apps, I would love, I would still love to be able to see citizens jump online and see, not necessarily real time, but close time, um, how recently their street was plowed, be able to see how many snowplows we have out there. I know we've started taking strides on that. I would prefer we get something like that online and continue with those initiatives before jumping into, to something else, especially when we start talking about, uh, this one in particular. I think there's some good that we could do with, uh, weather quality sensors as well, so it, it might be a little bit more conversation to make sure we get the biggest bang for our buck if we do go that route, so maybe something for strategic planning rather than, um, anyway, just, just a thought on that one. I wanted to share with the council, kind of a paraphrased email exchange that I had with the, the head of the West Jordan Chamber and get the council's input. She pointed to, uh, Councilmember Burton had facilitated a discussion previously with a number of business, uh, with a number of businesses in the community regarding water rates. She says, quote, "I believe in order to make any, any real progress, we need to have accurate data. Based on our previous, previous meetings between you, Justin Stoker, and I, I think our best chances, our best chance as real data for brainstorming solutions would be to use the spreadsheet that you created." Therefore, and then she started talking about trying to schedule from there. My response was, let me bring this up with the full city council next week. Since these are businesses that are outside of my district, and this would not be my town hall meeting, it would be appropriate for me to first get authorization from the council, and also approval as to what representations could formally be made for the council body, not just myself as an individual. Additionally, I think it would be beneficial to get the majority of the council to agree on sending three people to meet the businesses, so that they, the businesses could get a good feel for the views of the council as a whole. So I wanted to bring that up. This is, again, regarding the utility rates, something that's been voted on and decided by the council. Again, the schedule was adjusted, and I was not able to be here to be present when the, when the final vote was taken. I did voice my opposition to that. Having said that, I would look to the council for direction on this one and what your thoughts are as to, uh, meeting with the chamber for this item.
Councilmember Burger.
I was triggered not to answer that question, but I will since I'm here, then I'll come back to that later. Obviously, I would be in favor of that because I invited him to that meeting that we had prior. It would have been him and myself and Councilman Anderson, it would have been the three council members there. And I, those I thought would be good, one, because I was me, two, and, and I voted against it, Councilmember Anderson voted for it, and Councilmember McConaughey didn't vote. I thought that'd be a good thing, but he has lots of good information, he can help show where the city's money is going and, and what our water costs are, and how the difference with the spreadsheet he has, because he has been involved in this for several years. Councilman Anderson had a lot of information and numbers because he's been involved in this for quite a while and put it together. So both of them would be very beneficial to be there, and we did have a, what I consider a, a good turnout to that, and they were very cordial, understanding, and recognized that there are some needs of the city, and they don't want to take away from those needs. So I think further discussion would be appropriate.
How many businesses came to that turnout?
There were seven is what my memory is saying right now.
Dan, and Cisco, Boeing, Snugs, Jordan Valley Medical, Interstate Break, Dunford, Baker's Quality Steel is who was listed.
And Waste Management apologized because they were stuck up in Park City because it happened to be snowing at that time, and didn't make it tight.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So that makes me a little bit uneasy, and I'd like to propose maybe a different scenario. I, I, I wouldn't mind having a study session, um, not at five-thirty, but a, but a separate time that maybe we relook at that, knowing that we can't, we can't undo what we've done because we need that, those fundings, but if there's a better way to spread those out, which I think maybe some of your, um, graphs and flow charts would show, Councilman McConaughey, I'm open to having kind of a work session where we invite our, our water, our heavy user, water users, and anyone else that would want to come, because, of course, it would be an open meeting, but to have a town hall after the fact of something that the body already voted on, with the chamber, I just don't see the benefit of that. I don't, I don't see what that would accomplish. So if we're going to do something, I think it should be with the whole body, and it should be more of a work session where we look.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. There, there's a, a couple thoughts that, that come to mind, uh, for me. Uh, I did attend the meeting last week, I think it was last week, Thursday, or something, at four o'clock, met the business owners that were there, both, uh, Chamber West and West Jordan were there. They had some of our larger businesses that, that have, uh, high water use. However, my, my concerns are on two specific things. Number one, um, the city at our direction paid for a study by Raftalus, who is professionals in creating water rates, and I, I do apologize that, that Councilmember McConaughey was not able to vote. It was a weird council meeting with a lot of schedules shifting, and we all had interest in, in certain topics. But I, I guess what I'm struggling with is, we have a professional entity that has developed water rates to deal with issues such as the lack of our reserves to meet our bond covenants, the lack that previous councils to us as a collective body, um, going back as far as 2006, didn't raise rates even though our cost of water increased. So I, I don't know how meeting, again, to see what options there are can solve anything, because then we're saying the Raftalus study really doesn't, isn't that important, um, because we're still going to tweak things. The other thing that, um, I'm, I'm grateful that the West Jordan Chamber at least communicates with you. I am in a dark hole with them despite my background. So I, Chamber West has a water task force as part of their legislative affairs, that's who this council has adopted. Why don't those businesses meet with the Chamber West water? I think they would still be open to have some dialogue. Why can't that come into play if we're even going to do it? But then it goes back to my first one, we've already, we've already done the study, we've done what the recommendation was for the study. I don't think any of us wanted to raise the water rates, but we're not kicking the can down the road. We are solving a problem that was given to us by predecessors. And so I, I don't know what the benefit would be, so I, I don't know that I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
I agree with you in that we would just be kicking the can down the road, to quote another council member.
To Miami.
If we try to split this up and do something different, uh, ease it out over two, three years, uh, we don't, it does not generate the funding that's necessary to, to be generated. And again, we're kicking the can down the road. We made the decision that night, and, uh, to me, it's the end of the story. Unless we want to go back and, and, those that were on the prevailing side, bring it back up again and revisit the whole thing, um, that can be done. I would certainly be opposed to that. I, I think that, and, and I have been told that residents have been subsidizing businesses for years with their water rates. Uh, I think, uh, people need to pay their fair share for water. I had a, during the meet the mayor, uh, time today, I had a, a resident come in concerned about her water bill. I was able to explain to her, uh, the history behind everything, uh, how Jordan Valley Water raises their rates every single year. We, as a city council, have not done that every single year over the last twelve years, uh, and, and so we were trying to play catch-up. The rate that was increasing. The rate that was increased, this was a big rate, thirty-three percent, we understand that. But then it's going to level out for the next five years at eight percent a year. And she was, she has understanding of that, a retired lady, and understood that you can't sell things for less than you buy it for. It does not make sense. You've got to be able to take care of your expenses. When Brian came in and said it costs $800 per water break repair, we averaged two a week, holy cow, that alone is a lot of money. Not alone just buying the water, taking care of the infrastructure that we have. So personally, I don't see a benefit to the city to come back and revisit this issue unless we, as a council, want to rewrite the whole thing and ignore the money that we gave Raftalus and the study that they did as an inadequate study, in our opinion. So that's my feelings. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick thoughts on this issue. We all have a First Amendment right of association. We can all meet with whoever we want to meet with. I don't care if three of us want to go meet with, you know, whoever. You know, the president of Utah Jazz to talk about maybe the city sponsoring someday a basketball tournament. If three of us want to go meet with somebody, three of us can go meet with somebody. We can, whatever. We, it should be clear, though, when we do that, that the three of us cannot make policy. It takes four of us to make policy. And if four of us are going to get together and go to one of those meetings, we have to notice it, and it has to be a public meeting. We know that. So I'm fine with any three of us going to meet with anybody we want to at any given time, as long as we're clear with whoever we're meeting with, the expectations are set. I've had neighborhood meetings in my neighborhood about parks, about zoning issues, about all kinds of things, just when my neighbors want to talk to me about something, they want to know what I think and what I think the council might think. Former government, we did this. Lots of things come up, and I meet with people all the time. And if people want to meet with me, they can meet with me. And if another council member comes, Councilmember Anderson's come to a couple of those because they've been kind of West Side issues, we're both there. And we can both there, and we can both speak as to our opinion and as to whatever's going on, and we can trade ideas back and forth with the understanding that the council as a whole is what makes policy. And I think all the businesses understand that in this case, so I'm fine with Councilmember McConaughey, Burton, and Anderson, or anybody else, any three of us going to be with anybody that they want to. I think that's, I think that's understood. The second item I just want to mention on this item, and it's kind of silly, but it's been brought up, is, yeah, we pay for a study, but not every study is created equal. Not every study is going to come back. You can pay for a study and say, hey, when you study this, come back with this outcome. And they can come back with a certain outcome. We all know that not every study is completely unbiased, and not every study should be accepted on face value, and not every study is going to be adopted 100%. I mean, we didn't put a disproportionate fee on our business license fees last couple little bit ago. But we had a study that said we could, but we didn't. Did we waste the money on the study? I guess that's debatable. But don't take studies because a professional did a study and we paid a professional to do a study, which means, oh my gosh, their word is gospel. It's not. We have the authoritative legislative authority in the city, is what I was trying to say. Not a paid consultant. They are not paid to make policy, they're made to give input. And we're paid, elected to make policy.
Councilmember McConaughey?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. It doesn't sound like there were four in favor. And again, these are businesses that are outside of my district, so the reason they're asking is for representation from the city council. So without four saying, yes, please go and represent us in that forum, I'll respectfully decline the invitation. However, I will bring up Councilmember Whitelock's idea and maybe talk to each of you individually to see if there might be a forum in which we can do that prior to our next budgeting session. That's all I have for remarks. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have something totally different. Back before I was on the council, I asked the city if I could get a West Jordan City flag. And they said yes, I went to come get it, and then I was told, no, I couldn't because it was proprietary, and so they couldn't sell it to me. Proprietary, that was it. So I went to my council person and asked him if I could get one. And he said, yeah, you could get one. And said he would make arrangements, and we kept working on it, and it just did never seem to happen. Finally, a couple of years later, after I was on the council, I said, hey, can I get a flag? And they said, yes, it's this much. I said, wonderful. So I got a flag. Well, my flag, I use it, and it's getting a little worn, so I'm asking for another flag. So I'm checking with the council. Can we find a way that we can make our city flags available so the public could buy it if they chose to do so, or if I could buy it if I chose to do so? Is that something that we're willing to do? And I would love to see that happen. I think it should be nice to be able to let people have a West Jordan City flag.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilmember Burton's comment, I didn't think items that were paid for with taxpayer funding could be considered proprietary. I mean, you see businesses all the time, like creating federal flag, state flag. You also see like those government documents, like the HR posters that are required to be up. People sell those on the side. I didn't think that we could make things like that proprietary. If there is something that we need to change, I'd be happy to support changing that. But I would think we could work with like Colonial Flag or somebody else and just provide them a file that can be used to create flags at random. I don't think that's something that the city would have to get involved with other than maybe having a recommended outlet.
I agree. I would say that if Colonial Flag wanted to sell West Jordan flags, so be it. Is there a problem with that?
My understanding is we purchased because of the logo and the minimum number that could be purchased was, I don't know, 12 flags. I'll just pick an arbitrary number. Those are the 12 flags that the city had to purchase when the order was made because it was a special order. Can the public come in and order, buy those flags? No. Now, if you guys make a policy change and tell us, yes, the flags are now available, then we could probably sell them. But those were purchased with tax dollar monies for the city. They're not for available to the rest of the public. So when the question came to me, can we sell a flag to Councilman Burton? My answer was, do we sell flags to other citizens? And the answer was, no, we don't have flags for other citizens. It wasn't a proprietary, I don't know who told you that response. But the question was, it was purchased as city property. Do you want me to surplus one? And then I can sell it? I mean, that's, I didn't want to create a special circumstance that a council person could get a benefit of what taxpayers paid for.
So it's because the logo's on the flag, is it trademarked? Or is the logo on the flag?
We're actually working on getting that trademark, and I know Councilman McConaughey has some strong feelings about that. We're going to get a white paper, and we'll get that to the council.
Okay, Councilmember Whitelock?
Is your still on the flag?
Councilwoman Whitelock, that I said Councilman McConaughey, I should have said.
Oh, wow. They're flicking around here so fast. Councilmember Burton, you're back up.
So still on the flag thing? I have had some people ask in addition, so it's not just me. That's why I want to make it public, so I can buy it just like the public does, to be able to do it. So I'm just saying, is there a way we can do that? I did contact Colonial Flag, but then I'd need to buy a dozen flags as well. And frankly, they're pricey, and a dozen is extremely pricey. So I'm just willing to buy one off the city for what the city paid. So we probably could work something out. We could make them available for general public and have some extra ones. If they want to come buy a flag, we could do that. But we need to make a change to do that, and then I could get me another flag, and other public could. So I, personally, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't want to let some people in the public have a West Jordan City flag. So if there's consensus, I would like to pursue that. If there's not, then I'll just go clean my flag.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I'm not, I'm not sure we should be in the business of selling flags. I'm not opposed to other people having our flags, but that would mean we would have to purchase the 12, not necessarily budget-friendly flags and have them hanging out. And I'm not sure how many people will want to come and purchase a flag other than Mr. Burton. A couple. Yeah, I'm not sure. My remark for tonight has to do with, it's the same concern I have with our legislature right now. They have over 1,000 bills already filed. And that makes us maybe even just 200 new laws? When we have laws on the books, if we're not going to enforce them, then maybe that law isn't that important. And the law that I'm specifically referencing right now is our winter parking. On my street alone, I'm going to count real quick. There were 10 vehicles when the snowplow tried to come down. Henceforth, my street might not got a plow very well. And I can't blame those plow drivers. I would be very hesitant to get very near people's vehicles. So I guess my question to the body is, if that is, if that is an important law or rule that a prior council set and that we feel is important, then maybe we need to look at enforcing it. And I, tonight isn't the time to have discussion on that, but I think it's something that at some point we need to decide if it's important that we enforce it, and if it's not, that we remove it from the books because that would make me not be so upset of my neighbors. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to quickly return to the issue of the flags. I would prefer that we reach out, maybe Councilmember Burton could reach out to a flag provider and see what would be necessary for them to be able to supply the flags. I understand what Mr. Bricky's concern is in using city resources to acquire a certain good and then resell it, and I think that could potentially open up a world of headaches. We just spun off the Arts Council for something similar to this, where they would sell goods in the form of either tickets or concessions to their plays. The money would have to come in, and it was just financially very, very messy and troubling. So rather than do that, I would be more supportive of working to find a flag vendor that could produce the flag and have that ready for individuals that may want. And as Mr. Bricky did say, yes, I do have some strong feelings about intellectual property. And for the record for all, I really have no desire to see the city pursue intellectual property rights for things like our logo. I would prefer that people be able to use it as they see appropriate. But that's just me. Thank you.
It's when they use it inappropriately, I think that's a problem. Councilmember Burton?
Hopefully, it'll be my last time on this. So with the feeling I'm getting here, with the council, anyone object to me talking to Colonial Flag and persuading them to see if they'd be interested in marketing those for us?
Let me just make sure there's no legal issues that would prohibit us from doing that.
I suspect, I can do that if it's all right. I can anticipate the company saying, who's, who represents the city, and I'm going to talk to that person. So why don't we work together, figuring out what the minimum order is or just what the best solution might be?
Which is why I wanted to ask before I did it, because I'm just me.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to go to closed session if we're ready. I'd like to take a motion to go to closed session 30 minutes ago. I mean, for discussion of character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Strategy session discussed pending a reasonable, imminent litigation. Strategy session discussed the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water right or shares, and finish the meeting in closed session.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I will be happy to give you a second, but could we add a five-minute break prior?
Absolutely. So we have a motion and a second, discussion of the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob? You're writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey? McConaughey?